I want to welcome everyone to this meeting of the Monroe County Council for the evening of Tuesday, December 17th at 5:00 PM here in the Nat U Hill Room of the Monroe County Courthouse. I do want to note for the record that councilors present this evening include Counselor Iverson, Counselor Wiltz, Counselor Crossley, Counselor McKim, and Counselor Hock. I'd ask the councilors in the room, if you, in all, if you'd join me in the pledge of allegiance.
(Counselors' recitation of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.)
I want to thank you all for joining us. We have a long agenda this evening, but I want to note on our next item on the agenda before we've adopted this agenda officially, we're going to have a moment of remembrance for our beloved and dearly, dearly missed colleague Cheryl Munson, who is, as we can see by her chair this evening, well-remembered and well-loved by this council. What we're going to do here in the next few seconds, and I'm sorry, I struggle a little bit with words on some of this, we're going to have a moment of silence for Cheryl. I'm going to talk about that in just a second. There'll be other remembrances of her, obviously, this week, but in our meeting, we'd like to have a moment of silence. And then I'll open it up to councilors. If there are comments that you want to make, then I'll go out to the public for any comments that you might wish to make in remembrance of her. And I think that's what we'll do. Councilors, does that work okay for you? I think to open this up for this moment, and I want to apologize, I rarely get a little struggled for words to say, the way to say it, but I'm doing that right now. I think the way to open this up might be 80 seconds of silence, 80 seconds representing 80 strong years that were in service to science, to public service in our township and in the county, in her township, Indian Creek Township, and in the county, and in service to her family, which she loved. And as you all know, her family also included a large amount of wildflowers and animals that came in and out and all that. So, councilors, in all, if you join me, we're going to take 80 seconds of silence in remembrance Thank you very much. At this point, I'll just offer a couple words, and then, councilors, if there's things you want to add in, or you want to pass to the public, or whatever kind of fits you. As we do all this together, as we always do everything that is difficult, I just want to say, what a tribute to Cheryl Munson. Everywhere I've gone in the last seven days, literally, I have somebody stopping me, asking me questions about Cheryl Munson, or wanting to talk about Cheryl Munson, or remembering Cheryl Munson, who had an occupancy larger than life in all of our hearts and all of our public service, and touching so many different lives. Everything I've gone to, everywhere I go, messages, things streaming in, and what a tribute to this individual and the magnificent presence that she still has. The chair that we have in here decorated with flowers, which she would love, reminds me so much of Cheryl in all the times that we were either involved in transplanting flowers from her yard, or finding seeds somewhere, usually a public garden or two that we might later grow and cultivate. Just Cheryl is in everything, everything natural, everything good. And as someone that ran with her twice, I struggle mightily with that presence not being here and the need that we all have for the Cheryl Munsons of our life, who did magnificent things and did not always say, "I have done magnificent things." She just showed up and you kind of knew she had. And so I'm going to pass this off to any counselor that might wish to offer comments or what have you.
I'll be extremely brief, but I just, Cheryl and I ran together as at-large candidates in 2012, 2016, 2020. It's, yeah, we've been together for a long time as colleagues here. I was just trying to note all of the topics in which Cheryl has schooled me. And I mean, first responders, rural fire protection, archaeology, township governments, Planned Parenthood, flower gardening, historic barns, the tourism economy, you know. But I think the one memory I have that was one of the things I enjoyed most on the county council was when we were working together on PS Lit issues, particularly for fire departments. And she would call me and we would geek out for hours on tax rates and figuring out how much we could possibly allocate for rural fire protection if we wanted to, if we could get the city to agree, which we rarely did. But it was a great experience, and I'm going to miss her so much.
Cheryl was and is amazing, and I don't like to talk about people who are transitioning in past tense, because when we are all here, they're here. I was stepping in on the council back in December of '21. I remember she was so welcoming and open and honest and sat down and schooled me on all of the things that I should know in stepping on council. When receiving awards in the community, she was always there. She was always in the audience, and anytime I had an opportunity, I would always go, "That's my council mom, Cheryl Munson." Us girls here know that that's what she referred to us as, her council daughters, and we refer to her as our council mom. And there will be another, there will be no one other like her. She was a gentle, is a gentle giant, and if she disagreed, she would just smile and tell you what she thought, and then you would go about your day, and she would go on about her day. And she did it so with beautifully painted fingernails. That's all I definitely remember. It's extremely difficult to walk in here, to conduct business, to see an empty seat, but she is loved. And I just, yeah, I think the biggest thing that I can remember just being on the council is how much she loves Sophia Travis Grant Committee time. Every single time, like, starting in March, she just lit up about, "Who do we think would be the resident appointee and getting us going?" And even, you know, some of the last times here, when the presentations that the public was giving us, she just went on and on and on and on, because she just truly thought that that was the best thing that we did here in the county. And there's a difference between being a politician and a public servant, and she is the embodiment of a public servant. Yeah, this has been a difficult year, so I will definitely miss her.
I've thought a lot about this, and I'm really sad. I know many of you have dealt with loss this year, and this certainly hits hard. And sometimes when I look for solace and words don't come easily, I do turn to poetry, and I'd like to share a short poem with you tonight. This is by Patricia A. Fleming. It's called "Farewell, Dear Friend." "I lost a precious part of me where you once dwelled, dear friend. A bond that spanned a lifetime came abruptly to an end. Will my memory sustain me even though now that you've gone? Or will your image slowly fade away without your face to gaze upon? And will never feel the comfort of your loving, warm embrace? You'll never make me laugh again until my stomach aches. When my heart is feeling lonely, you won't answer when I call. And when I start to lose my balance, you won't catch me if I fall. I won't have your voice of reason when I start to lose my way, or your reassuring words of strength when I'm feeling so afraid. I will treasure all those good old days, all those secrets that we shared. That carefree person I was with you won't completely disappear. I will hold tightly to your memory and forever miss you so, but I will trust that God must need you more, and I will let gently..."
I'm not really ready to say much except the obvious, which is that, as much as our community has a hole in it, where Cheryl has loomed large, council has a hole in it, and so does my heart, so.
Yes, I'm going to share with you, if I can, one of my last messages from Cheryl. And this was in June. We talked beyond that, but this was in June when my family had a loss. And she just said, "I'm so sorry for the sadness for your family. She's sending caring thoughts and prayers for you." And then she said, "Tears come from the heart. Together, your family will pull through." And I think this is what she's saying to us tonight, and I'm grateful for this message. Cheryl was my friend, and I will miss her.
Counselors, I'm going to go to the public for anyone that might wish to offer a comment in remembrance of our friend.
Thank you, President Deckard, for your leadership. Thanks to the council for this lovely tribute to my friend Cheryl Munson. Good evening. I'm Eric Spoonmore, president of the Greater Bloomington Chamber of Commerce, and on behalf of our 867 member organizations, I want to extend our deepest sympathies and condolences to the family of Cheryl Munson, who we lost far too early last week. We considered Cheryl as the epitome of a trusted and selfless public servant. Throughout the years, she served our community in multiple elected capacities with great distinction. She was a dedicated conservationist, stalwart for our local nonprofit agencies, our public schools, the Monroe County History Center, our Waste Reduction District, and the Monroe County Convention Center, among so many other community organizations. And of course, we all knew Cheryl as a loving wife to her husband, Pat, a devoted mom and grandmother, and just a wonderful friend that so many of us had the joy of knowing. I had the great privilege of serving with Cheryl on the Monroe County Council for six years, along with many of you as well. Cheryl was the president of the council when I started, and I learned so many valuable lessons watching her do the public's work. I could always count on Cheryl for honest advice when I needed it. Or when the going really got tough, I could count on Cheryl for a cold Sam Adams Boston Lager on her back porch, watching the sunset. And those conversations were some of the best memories that I will always cherish of Cheryl. Now, I can say from my personal experience that public service is not easy. It's often a thankless job that comes with immense sacrifices for those who heed the call to serve. But despite the many sacrifices and the pressures of the job, Cheryl always made it look easy. Cheryl was beloved by her constituents and her colleagues because their concerns and causes were her top priority. She genuinely and tirelessly worked toward the betterment and advancement of Monroe County residents, and our county is a better place because of Cheryl's service. Rest in peace, Cheryl Munson. You'll be greatly missed by all who knew you and worked with you throughout your remarkable life and career. Thank you.
I'm Jen Pearl with the Bloomington Economic Development Corporation, and just came to offer our condolences. Cheryl always seemed incredibly pragmatic and community-oriented, and didn't really get pulled into, you know, drama, who's just like, "What can we do?" And, you know, positive about it. I still remember we were at a CDO meeting in the fall, and she's like, "We need a SOR summit," you know? And we're like, "Yes, okay, great." And so we're just, we're very grateful for all of that. But I also just wanted to share my condolences with all of you on council, as well as everybody that worked with her from the county and everyone else in the community as well. And if there's any way that we can support you all in this time, please let us know, because we're all in this together, and may her memory be for a blessing.
Just real quickly, as you know, when Sheriff Marte and I came into office here, Cheryl served as our first liaison, one of our liaisons. And, you know, looking back on that, all I can say really is that poor, dear, dear woman that had to walk us through what we were so desperately trying to do and so ignorant about how we were doing it. But she was very, very helpful to us. She was very genuine with us. And I remember we'd come up with some idea or a thought process of what we were going to do, and we would present it to her, and she would say something like, "Well, Phil, have you thought about maybe doing X as opposed to what you're thinking about?" And it was, you know, I expected her to look at us sometime and go, "That's the dumbest thing I've ever heard of. What are you talking about?" But she never did. She was always very genuine, gave us guidance, tried to steer us through the waters that we were trying to maneuver. So I just come here with much gratitude and thanks for Cheryl and helping us through that very, very difficult first year. And obviously, I know her as well as you do, but my experience with her has been nothing short of pleasant and very, very helpful. And I wanted to thank you for allowing her to be our liaison in that first year.
Counselors, I'll return to you if anyone had any final...
Good evening, all. My name is Joe Davis, and I became acquainted with Cheryl almost 30 years ago when I, as a farm boy, moved down here to pursue the same in southern Indiana. And for a few years, I commuted back and forth seasonally to my parents' farm in Cass County. And every time I drove from those flat lands down here to where the hills started, I became more and more intrigued by how different the southern part of the state was from the rest of it. And I also became more aware of how the plant communities were so different. So that started a period of research in which I tried to learn as much as I could about the glaciation that had taken place centuries ago, eons ago, and how that had affected the geology and the geography and the culture. And I came across a book that Cheryl had written, "The History of Indiana." And she presented in very simple terms how the state was settled in a different way. It was the agriculture and the economics were different, and that everything about this made Indiana a very unique state and a special place to be, especially if you were down here. Well, it just so happened that I had a lawn scape business as well during the off-farm season, and her brother, brother-in-law, ended up being one of my clients. And I was explaining today how I was trying to protect what most would call a weed, but I was sharing that it was a flower, and it was important for this reason and for that reason. And I started to launch into this book that I had just read, and he said, "That's my sister. I can't believe that you know about that book. They only sold like 100 of those copies," you know? And I would occasionally meet Cheryl the Glenn Black because of my interest in archaeology and anthropology, and I would bring this up, how important her book was. Well, just this past summer, as we were leaving a county council at-large forum, I told her again, reminded her about how special that book was. And she said, "Joe, if I could get another grant from the state, I would write another book, a sequel to that. It's right up here. I'm ready to put it down on paper. I just need that money." And that was the spirit she had. She was built to share. She was built to make everyone feel special, and those foundation blocks will carry on with all those people who she touched. And I thank her and her family for the opportunity to show my respect, and I thank you all for listening. Thanks.
Well, we will remember our friend beyond this evening, and forgive us for a quick way to do that in the immediacy of all this. And one thing I'll just say in kind of closing us at this moment with this agenda item is, you know, during these meetings, a lot of times, I will look to my right, and I'll see the image of Nat Hill, and I always think about our history in this county, and names that you remember are names that will be remembered. And for sure, in my mind, Cheryl Munson is one of those names that will, lessons and stories and example will come up continuously, probably yet into this meeting still. And we are grateful to everyone in the community that's reached out. We, of course, want to remember that for every public servant, there's a family they go home to and that they love, and there's a family that is grieving a wife, a mother, grandmother, and close confidant in all things. And so we think of the Munsons, the entire Munson clan. Well, councilors, I think that will take us now on to item number four, an adoption of the agenda. I have several changes here to read off, but I just want to see if councilors had anything before I jump through all of these. All right. I'm going to ask unanimous consent on a few different things. The sheriff's request is tabled, which is item eight, merit deputy salary discussion that is tabled to councilors. I'm thinking, next meeting in January. Also, I'd ask unanimous consent to add item 10B, which is jail requests for salary or an amendment, and rename item 10 as 10A. I'd ask unanimous consent to add item 17R, auditor request for the creation of a new account line, as well as add item 16C, auditor request for an ARPA category transfer. I think I've got all the technical unanimous consent requests there. Is there any objection from councilors? No objection, so ordered. Okay, so we've got changes to the existing agenda. The auditor's giving me a look.
Hi. I sent an email earlier just with a request to add an account line to the council budget. Did you add that? I missed it. If you did, I'm sorry. Okay, thank you.
That's part of all those things I said, right, Michelle?
Yes.
Awesome, good. We'll keep giving each other looks until we get it right. All right. That agenda, with no objection, is amended before you. Any other changes, councilors? Okay, all right. Seeing none, let's do a voice vote on the amendment, on the agenda. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any oppose? Is so ordered, or it is adopted? Let's move on to item number five, public comment. This is public comment for items not on the agenda, and we'll have a time limit of three minutes per speaker. If we have anyone wishing to make a public comment, they may come to the podium here and do so.
Eric Spoonmore, president of the Greater Bloomington Chamber of Commerce. I'm joined by my colleague Christopher M. G., director of advocacy, public policy at the Chamber of Commerce. My understanding is this is the final meeting of the year for the county council. So if I may indulge you all, we would like to recognize an individual, a council member who will be finalizing their term, Mr. McKim, on the council for his extraordinary service. So the chamber has prepared a proclamation that I would like to read at this time, if you are okay with that. So, "Whereas, since January 2009, Jeff McKim has demonstrated distinguished public service and dedication to the residents of Monroe County, Indiana, as an elected at-large member of the Monroe County Council. And whereas, Councilmember McKim served as the Monroe County Council's elected president in 2010, 2011, 2013, and 2014, providing leadership for the seven-member fiscal body that budgets and appropriates all funds for Monroe County government. And whereas, Councilmember McKim has served as the longtime chair of the Greater Bloomington Chamber of Commerce as legislative counsel, lending his invaluable expertise, steady guidance, and pragmatic approach to advance key issues affecting our business community and residents. And whereas, Councilmember McKim's leadership and responsible stewardship of taxpayer resources have consistently prioritized the public good, advanced economic development, and demonstrated a profound respect for the trust placed in him by the residents of Monroe County, Indiana. And whereas, through his steadfast efforts, Councilmember McKim has consistently supported the chamber's mission..." mission by educating our members on local government processes, fiscal and tax matters, to ensure the business community remains informed, engaged, and empowered in the policies that shape our community. And whereas, Councilmember McKim's lasting impact on our community has strengthened the partnership between local government and the business sector, building a foundation of mutual respect, transparency, and a shared commitment to responsible fiscal management. And whereas, the Greater Bloomington Chamber of Commerce knows of no other county council member in the state of Indiana whose excel prowess and spreadsheet mastery is well to the expertise of Councilmember McKim. Now therefore, the Greater Bloomington Chamber of Commerce hereby honors and celebrates Jeff McKim as a president's legacy award recipient for his longstanding and exceptional contributions to public service. Thank you, Jeff McKim, for your service to Monroe County.
That picture, that was perfect.
And Counselor McKim, while we've got you on the agenda now for a second, I want to say that we're not going to let the chamber have all the fun tonight, although they have a lot of fun. And we're grateful to them. Your colleagues are beyond grateful for your service. It is hard to see a council member go. It's very hard to see your service end at the end of this year. And we have looked into state law about how we could extend that, do other things, and we're on it, but we're not quite there yet. But your presence here, as the chamber has so awesomely laid out, is felt and will be felt beyond this meeting. And your colleagues wanted you to have this from us to join that and to know that we are grateful to you and that all those years, headaches, calls from department heads, many of which are here, elected officials, is not forgotten and will be sorely missed. Thank you, counsel.
I don't, I don't, no, I don't want to take up any more time, but I am, I, you really are, you are my Monroe County family, my colleagues on the council, a lot of you sitting here in the audience here. Linda Brady, for example, I mean, I have learned so much about county government from you and from Lisa Ridge and from so many of the rest of you, from Marty. I mean, we've served together now for 16 years, haven't we? Which I know is less than half of your tenure on the elected office, but yeah.
What we're going to do without you, I don't know. So if you have a miracle going, I hope you make it happen. I mean, if you can squeeze in the top. Oh, you always help me figure things out. We work together on those budgets. Nobody works. It's hard. I'm figuring out how to make things work as Jeff McKim. And I...
Well, I will continue to serve this county and this community in any way I can. And I am always there for all of you. You all are my friends and my family. And thank you. I am so honored and touched.
Want to get a picture? Sure. Sure, sure, sure. Thank you very much. One thing I'll just say before we move on to other public comments is that I offered you at the beginning of the year, when you announced that you would not be running again, I offered you a chance to preside over part of an agenda, a budget, and that has not evaporated yet. So at some point tonight, I'm going to pass this gavel over and have you take it for a turn, if you wouldn't mind, one last time to lead.
That would be my honor.
Absolutely. All right. Other public comments, for items not on the agenda. Come forward here in the Nat U Hill. Remember, all are welcome. Chief Deputy Parker.
Just very quickly, want to thank the council for allowing us to postpone our presentation to the January meeting. I think it's probably better served at that meeting for a myriad of reasons. But as we go into that meeting, I felt it necessary to come up here and the sheriff asked me to speak. He couldn't be here tonight himself. But I want to make something very, very clear. There's, you know, as government works, things can get cloudy, things can get misinterpreted, things can get even ugly sometimes. But, you know, we're all in this big mess together, whatever you want to call it. And I just wanted to make it very clear that from the sheriff's department perspective, the men and women of the sheriff's office, the sheriff himself, that this council has been very, very, very supportive of our agency, as we have came into many different things that we needed to try to accomplish. And I think we did so well ahead of schedule because of the support that we have received. So I just, before we go into, no matter what happens over the course of the next, you know, meeting or so, I felt it necessary to say that. And just to give you an example of that is, we came before this body, I believe, back in August or September of 2022, or 2023. And we were fully staffed at the jail. We still, right now, we have one vacancy that we're going to be filling in the next few days. And if you look at the history of that facility and the struggles that we have had to keep that facility staffed with quality corrections officers, it has been mighty, a mighty, mighty struggle. And we have to work at it, don't get me wrong. We have to address it as it comes, but we've been able to. And that's largely because this body recognized that and helped us take measures to improve that and rectify that as we continue to do that. So I just wanted to say thank you for that. And we'll have this discussion in January. And then the last thing I wanted to do is to thank councilperson McKim there for all the assistance that he's given us. I've probably talked, burned his ear up on the phone here in the last two weeks, more than he probably cared for me, too. But he's taken my call, he's listened, he's gave us good counsel, he's gave us good advice. So I just want to say much, much, much appreciated, counselor. Thank you.
Other comments from the public, items not on the agenda? Seeing none, we will move on to the consent agenda, which is item number six.
Counsel, I move to approve the following consent agenda items. Summary minutes for October 7, 2024, 2025, modifying the lit rates, public hearing, October 15, 2024. Okay. Council meeting, October 22, 2024, Joint Council and Board of Commissioners Work Session, October 28, 2024, Council meeting, and 2025 Budget Adoption, November 12, 2024, Council meeting, and November 26, Council meeting. The jails request for a category transfer and fund 1,000-0380, County General Jail of $5,882.08 from the services category to $4,009.83 in the supplies category, and $1,872.25 in the capital category, totaling $5,882.08. The highway department's request for a category transfer and fund 1,135-0000, cumulative bridge of $15,000 from the services category to the personnel category. The treasurer's request for the creation of account line 38001, judgment, AFCS, AFCS and clerk forward, and fund 1,000-0003, county general treasurer, and simultaneously approve a category transfer of $4,490.70 from the personnel category to the services category. And the health department's request for a category transfer and fund 8150-9624, Tana Futures, and the amount of $2,981.09 from the supplies category and $226.50 from the services category, for a total transfer of $3,207.59 to the personnel category.
Second, are there any questions from the council on the consent agenda? Seeing no questions from council, are there any public comments on the consent agenda item? If you have any, come forward to the podium in the Nat U Hill room or raise your hand on teams. All right. Seeing none, let's go to a roll call vote on the consent agenda.
These all can be done by voice vote.
Can. All those in favor of this consent agenda signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Unanimous. All right. That takes us to item, just to make sure I'm in the right place here, seven, opioid settlement application review board. And to do this, I'm going to invite the members of the opioid settlement application review board to come and present their opioid settlement funding recommendations to the council. And if it's more convenient for you to use that and sit, you may do so. Commissioner Giddens is with us, as well as Andre Butler, the president of the board. Welcome both of you.
Good evening. Today is hard to get through. So appreciate you listening to us. I wanted to give some background and context for what we're about to present, so that not only the members of the board, who haven't, members of council, who haven't been involved in some of this, but also the public understands some of the rationale for what we're proposing. In 1980, a five-sentence letter to the New England Journal of Medicine informed readers that a review of hospital charts indicated that for hospitalized patients with no history of addiction, it appeared that there was a very low risk of addiction when opioids were prescribed for chronic pain. There was no critical analysis of this letter or its findings, and it was not peer-reviewed before being published in one of the most prestigious medical journals in the whole world. Those five sentences, of course, have led to great harm. So fast forward to a timeframe between 1999 and 2015. In that 16-year period alone, there were more than 183,000 deaths from prescription opioids in the United States prescriptions provided by medical personnel. That can be directly linked to the aggressive opioid marketing campaign pursued by Purdue Pharma and others citing this letter for support. So as you know, several years ago, an effort was begun to sue the manufacturers and distributors of these opioids to collect the funds needed to help mitigate the harm done by these drugs. To date, and this does not include settlement from Purdue Pharma, over $500 billion has been collected and distributed to states. And in Indiana, the state has opted to share approximately half of that settlement with local governments. And over the course of 18 years, we expect Monroe County will receive at least $5 million. And I say at least because we know that there should be money coming from additional settlements at this point. Even today, opioids in the United States are prescribed at twice the rate as in other countries. So several months ago, Councilmember Peter Iverson and I gathered together a group of people to talk about how we should use this opioid settlement money. This group included people in recovery, people in our own health department, a representative or two from the auditors department, members of the Substance Use Disorder Awareness Commission, councilmember Iverson and me. We developed guidelines and decided that we wanted to help with harm reduction, recovery housing, the creation of one or more recovery community organizations, treatment, and scholarships for individuals looking to become certified peer recovery coaches. To help organizations with planning, we recommended that funding be available for up to two years at a time with a $200,000 cap on any given grant. This, as you know, became the basis for the creation of the Opioid Settlement Application Review Committee. So there are many, many paths to recovery, and recovery is not a linear process. Some individuals go through multiple attempts before they feel that their addiction no longer controls their life. This is one of the reasons harm reduction is so important. Harm reduction allows us to keep that individual alive until he or she feels that they have been able to regain control. One method of harm reduction, though certainly not the only one, is a syringe services program, which Monroe County offers. We're one of only eight counties in the entire state to do that. When people participate in such a program, they are also offered disease testing and information on where to receive recovery services. There is strong evidence which shows that individuals who participate in a syringe services program are more likely to enter a recovery program. Offering a syringe service program has also been shown to reduce the incidence of HIV and viral hepatitis in those with a substance use disorder. Part of helping those in recovery involves providing housing and case management. Recovery doesn't happen overnight or even in a month. And we need to recognize that by offering longer-term housing and support for those in the recovery housing. The Johns Hopkins School of Public Health put together five guiding principles for the use of opioid settlement funds. And prior to even knowing about those guiding principles, I'm proud to say that Monroe County had already adopted many of those principles. We are involving people in recovery in our review and recommendation process. We brought in healthcare people. We support harm reduction. We are expanding the care provided by existing entities. And we can do that only because we have such wonderful entities already in our county. And we are being open and transparent about our process. Tonight, if the Monroe County Council approves these requests, and tomorrow, if the Board of Commissioners signs the MOUs for these grants, we will also be way ahead of many other local governments in expanding this settlement money. I was on a call about a month ago with people all across the country. They hadn't even started to form a committee to look at these kinds of things yet. So we are way, way ahead of helping people in our community. The grant applications that we received in 2024 requested over 1.8 million in funding. We had only a little over a million to work with. And so we had to obviously make decisions about where that funding should go. And we are tonight recommending that almost every cent of the $1 million be spent, so that we can move people forward. So also, I don't know if you all received the email I did today from the Indiana Attorney General's Office, but we will soon be receiving an additional one-time payment of over $40,000 in restricted opioid funds due to a settlement with Endo International, an opioid manufacturer. So there'll be even a little bit more going into the pot. With that, I'd like to now introduce Mr. Andre Butler, Chair of the Application Review Committee, who will present our recommendations. And I thank you for your patience.
Thank you, President Deckard, councilmen, councilwomen, Commissioner Giddens. I would like to start with quarter one, which spanned from April 12, 2024, to June 30, 2024, beginning with Amethyst House Incorporated receiving $185,000. Avalon Community Land Trust receiving or received $150,000. Beacon Incorporated received $75,000. Bloomington Cooperative Living received $100,000. Bloomington Cooperative Living, received a hundred thousand dollars. Indiana Recovery Alliance, two hundred thousand dollars. Monroe County Circuit Court, fifty thousand dollars. New Leaf New Life, fifty-two thousand dollars. And New Leaf New Life received an additional twelve thousand ninety-five dollars. Moving on to quarter two, which spanned from July first, twenty twenty-four to September thirtieth, twenty twenty-four, Courage to Change Sober Living, received seven, fifty-seven thousand six hundred dollars. New Leaf New Life received a hundred twenty-six thousand six hundred fourteen dollars. And lastly, Indiana Recovery Alliance, received two thousand, two thousand five hundred dollars. Thank you.
And that last item was for an individual who would receive, it was a scholarship so that she can become a certified peer recovery coach.
And so I've got a question for Ms. Turner King, if I could really quick. Are we, are we adopting what has been read or are we just receiving this information? Give me a little bit of clarification.
So the request for counsel tonight is to approve the list of recipients, and then you will do the appropriations for the restricted, the unrestricted fund. And then tomorrow, the commissioners will consider for approval MOUs with each of the organizations in hopes that we can get them paid by the beginning of next year.
Sure, we were clear on that, and the subsequent motions fill all that out. All right. So I guess at this point, we'll go to comments or questions from counselors. Counselor Iverson.
Let me begin by drawing counsel's attention to what Mr. Butler just read. You'll see that the organizations are divided into multiple quarters. You'll see that in the ordinance that the commissioners will take up tomorrow in today's packet on page one hundred and nine. That is because we are taking rolling applications for these funds. If you are watching this meeting and you think that your organization qualifies for these funds, please go to co.munro.in.us, click on important news, and there you'll find the qualifications for these funds as well as a link to learn how to apply. The second thing I will note is that this has Cheryl Munson's fingerprints all over it. The way that we designed the spreadsheet to rank these different organizations was shamelessly stolen from Sophia Travis, which Cheryl Munson designed. The way that we are taking applications was shamelessly stolen from the way that Cheryl Munson took applications and Sophia Travis. Her legacy is so strong, and I just, I'm so thankful that we were able to work with her and to use her wisdom on, on this.
Other comments? Counselor Crossley.
I just had a question. Thank you all for the work that you did and all of this. I know it wasn't easy, and it's a long time coming. A couple of questions here is, one, were there, I know I see Monroe County Circuit Court was awarded fifty thousand. Were there any other departments in the county that were able to apply for the grant funded? Or were there other departments that applied, rather?
Not at this time. There weren't.
Okay. And my other question is, because I see a couple of times New Leaf New Life is on here. Just out of curiosity, is there a limit to how many people, or how many times an organization can come back and apply?
We did not have that recommendation from the original group, and these are for very different kinds of things that they're asking for, like, for example, the twelve thousand ninety-five dollars. That was off so that people could undergo this training to become a certified peer recovery coach. With that, they anticipate developing their own recovery community organization, which will then allow us to finally get the IREX program here in Monroe County. I was in touch with people about that recently, and so this is a way to move us forward on multiple fronts, not just on recovery.
And, oh, I'm sorry.
Let me just further clarify that if an organization has multiple projects within the organization, then they're, they're able to apply, which is what New Leaf New Life did. So you'll see multiple, you, we have the potential of seeing organization appearing multiple times.
Just one more. I guess because this work is important and, you know, we all kind of work in silos here in Bloomington and Monroe County, is there, how else can we get the word out to maybe see more organizations try to apply to take, or to get some of this grant funded too?
The, the qualifications for this are really tight. You have to be working in the recovery space, and you have to be working with individuals in recovery. So whereas our community is blessed with many, many nonprofit organizations, for example, food banks would not qualify, or other organizations that are doing work in the social services, if they're not working directly in recovery, would not qualify. And I, is there anything else that either you two want to add to this?
Not me, thank you. But I, those are great questions.
Counselor McKinn.
Yeah, so back when we approved the budget, I know that we had discussed a, a position in the Monroe County, in the circuit court through the probation department for essentially a data analyst that would be the coordinator for the J-RAC. And I believe that, was there an, and, and our, our hope was that that, that position could be funded through the opioid settlement money. Now, I see they got fifty thousand dollars. Is that for that position, and is that the full amount that was needed?
It was not the full amount that was requested. It was through the probation department, and part of the money was for supplies, but our goal was to help people in recovery, period. And so we were trying to do that as expeditiously as possible. Also, and this is me speaking, is me, but I, I hope that it was also shared by some of the other members of this committee. The folks that, the wonderful work that's being done by our probation department and by our specialty courts is also supported by providing housing for people in recoveries, by providing programming for people as they're exiting our justice system. And so we felt that there was a lot of wraparound that went with this that would impact some of the same individuals.
I mean, that's certainly true. I just, this, this was a very specific need that I had had high hopes that this funding would have been able to serve. So I'm, I'm disappointed that, and I'm not sure for the reasons why, but I'm disappointed that the full request was not funded.
Counselor Wilt.
On that same topic, that request, when, when did that request? After the quarter two?
Went into, like a quarter?
It did? It went in in the second?
That, that particular rest, I don't have all of this in my mind, I must, I must tell you. My notes.
It's fine. I'm, I'm not trying to put you on the spot. I am, I'm just wondering if, if there's an opportunity, I guess, still for that position to be funded in this way? Is it still an outstanding application, I guess?
There's no reason why additional money couldn't be considered. We don't know when we're going to get the next tranche of funding coming in. And like I said, we got this notice today that we'll be receiving another forty thousand dollars on that one specialty item. So, and remember, this was across a two-year period as well. So this would give us chance over the next year and a half or two years to come up with additional money. But like I said, we had to make some, some, some decisions.
So these grants are for two years?
Up to.
Up to two years. So varying length.
Yes.
The next time, when is the next time you anticipate then awarding grants? I guess I, I'm a little unclear as to what the quarters are and how that relates to the future funding.
There could be additional items submitted this particular quarter that would then be considered early in the next year. So every quarter, people can apply.
And if, so you, you, you mentioned getting forty thousand dollars, so you'll have that money presumably relatively soon. I didn't see the email that you talked about.
Yeah, but that is in restricted funds, so we have to watch how things are spent too. That, that's very specific in terms of how that money can be spent, but that doesn't mean that we couldn't shift funds from one, because a lot of the money that we received is in unrestricted funds.
So how much money is left?
About four hundred dollars.
Yeah. Okay. So we, you really don't, like, somebody could apply this quarter, but there's nothing to give out right now. So will applications be held until we have money and then reconsidered? So if you didn't, if you perhaps applied in quarter three of twenty twenty-four or whatever, you know, you'll, you could be considered maybe down the road in a year? Or would you need to re-up? I just, I guess I want to make sure I understand, so if I get questions.
I think that, I don't know, Counsel Iverson, my thinking was, is that the group could reach back out to people and say, are you still in need of this funding?
And I think this is probably an appropriate time to say that we have moved the proceedings of this body into this room where they are on camera and captured by cats so that you can watch these proceedings in real time. And we also have put this application onto our website, which is why I made my announcement earlier, that anybody can go online and fill out this application again, or indicate that they have an application still standing, reach out to us on the body or to the auditor's office. I believe the auditor's office is where a lot of the questions end up going. Am I correct?
That is correct, and I will let you know that we are tracking the applications that have been received and not fully funded, so those will be provided to the board at the time that they are reviewing all applications.
I, I'm sure it says this, but I haven't read it carefully enough, I guess. The list of projects, is this from the unrestricted or a combination?
Combination.
Combination. And you said the forty thousand that's coming in is restricted and has tighter rules with it. I, I wonder, because we had conversations during budget discussions about, hey, maybe opioid money could be used for this, I guess I want to get an idea of what expectations we should have. Should we assume that the, at least as it's set now, the intent of the, your decision-making body is to take this money from the government and give it to the community and not fund something internally, such as this position that J-RAC was looking at?
Well, I'm a little embarrassed to say this, but that information was never shared with the committee, that the council wanted to fund stuff.
Oh, okay. Okay. And then, okay, that's, so regardless, would that be a, something that you would consider? I guess, does that meet, I don't know if you have certain requirements. I know you, you listed principles or values, and, and I get that, but I'm on J-RAC, so I'm a little bit more familiar with what they were looking for in that position, and I feel like it would be a good support to the community services. And it's actually an unfunded mandate that we have that support. So that's a whole other, not your problem, our problem kind of situation, but that's where these conversations came from. And again, going back, just, I'm just trying to, is this, is this, should I stop barking up this tree?
I, I think one of the things that would have to be made clear to the, the committee is, does this, is it pretty much exclusively for people who are in recovery, for people who have been impacted by opioids and other illicit drugs? Because specialty courts do reentry, they work with veterans now. Some of those also are people in recovery or people that eventually might be in recovery. But we have to make sure that what we're looking at takes that into account. You know, when we talk about recovery housing, we've got people in recovery housing, not eighty percent of people in recovery housing are in recovery, sort of thing. So we're, we're looking to, to keep things along that line, I think. Is that fair to say, Andre?
Thank you. And I think, I mean, these, the, what I know about these projects, you know, I'm fully supportive of the work and what I, I do know these organizations from those support, and, you know, they are well-deserving. I'm not trying to take anything away from that, just trying to get an idea of the bigger picture and other things that may be at play. Thank you.
Iverson?
The very end of the items that you listed off, you listed an individual that is receiving funds to become a peer recovery coach that does not appear on the ordinance that is in the packet. I'm legal.
Yes, it is. It's Indiana Recovery Alliance for JP.
That's correct. It's not in Resolution forty-eight, and I was waiting to make that correction prior to the vote on that. So I would ask to add to Resolution forty-eight in quarter two, just one more organization that would read Indiana Recovery Alliance in parentheses JP, which is the initials of the individual who's becoming a peer counselor, and the amount of two thousand five hundred.
Do we have unanimous consent to adopt that into that resolution? Any objection? All right. That is amended into the resolution. Other counsel comments, questions? Counselor Hock.
Yes, I understand a lot of this is skated because the committee made up their own rules, it seems to me. And what I would like to see is a committee of people who are representing county government to come up with a list of how some of these dollars could assist us in some of our obligations. We've already been instructed by council president that he's concerned about the revenue stream and what might be happening with grants and so forth, that we come to rely on to operate county government. And in many ways, we need to be thinking about how all of these dollars coming in could assist us in our obligation to cover some of these issues. And so I won't be supporting this. Part of the, part of the thing that I had concern about is if they didn't know about it, maybe someone's not paying any attention to what council has asked for. And if we don't stand up and save these dollars for what we need to have it for, the Veterans Court, for heaven's sakes, don't we all need to be supporting that? It will be too late. If they make a plan that this is what we're going to do for the next two years, then what, then what do we do when we are up against it and we need to have it for some of the services right there in the jail where we're spending a lot of money and we know that it is tied to the opioid use and whether or not they are in recovery, if they need, I don't, I don't know what the state rules are that's tied to it. But we've had people from the jail that's had to go into hospitalization, quite expensive because of that. Could any of these dollars be used for that? Folks, I think this is a, a lot of money that we need more eyes on it. But I mean, I understand if this is what the group wants to do, but I, I just really, I think we could have had a stronger use of the dollars for what, what our obligations are.
There was guidance that came out from the state also about how these dollars are to be spent, and we, we tried to follow that guidance also.
Other comments or questions from counsel? One thing I, I just want to throw out into the atmosphere of things, and I don't ever want to put words in a judge's mouth, because that's how you get in trouble. But when we had, I believe, Judge Dietkopf here, one of the things that she told us, and I don't even remember what we were, we were talking about the jail, I believe, when we were talking about the various problem-solving courts, is they, they have raw recidivism numbers that, if, if I heard it right, and again, I may be mistaken, were unbelievably impressive. I, I think I heard a three or four percent recidivism rate, and I'm going back to my old Ball State Criminology, Criminal Justice classes, and I don't think anything has a rate like that. So I, I, I think we do need to be looking, I think every, every entity in this county needs to look hard at that. I don't know if that's the question denied, but those numbers are incredible. I mean, that's, that's unmatched. I mean, that's, that's unmatched. I'm not taking away from anything elsewhere or whatever. You, you can do one thing and another, but it's that if we would ever, due to grant funding changes, lose our problem-solving courts, that alarms me a little bit. And I'm going to be quiet at that. Other counsel, so what we have before us, I want to move our agenda because, folks, we've got a semi-load of things here. On, what we have before us is this amended resolution before the council, and we have to dispose of that before two appropriation requests that sit behind it related to this. And so if there's no further discussion on that, what I'll do is go to public comment on the resolution.
No, we, you need to read into, you need to read the motion regarding the, the resolution.
And we actually did not do that.
This was just a presentation.
Okay, all right.
Okay. So, doing my job, standing my lane. Counsel, I move to approve the opioid settlement review board's request for the creation of account law 30006 contractual and fund 1238-0000 opioid unrestricted and simultaneously approve an additional appropriation of $279,895.84 in the services category.
There should, hang on. There, there should have been a motion under A regarding the resolution.
And then do the, the additional appropriations afterwards? Is that what you're saying?
Yeah. Because if you don't approve the resolution, there's no reason to be forward with the, and I'm sorry, I forgot to put that on there. So it's a, it's a, it's to approve Resolution 202448.
Okay.
So, I apologize.
Okay, so I'll withdraw that motion that I just made and make this one. Counsel, I approve, I motion to approve Resolution 2024-48, recommendation of opioid settlement fund recipients.
All right, so we have a motion, a second. Ms. Turner King made a note earlier about the change. Did you want to say that again?
Um, I did. I have added, so in the resolution, there's a chart for quarter one and quarter two with all of the recipients and the amount that they'll be receiving. And so for quarter two, I added one more recipient, which is Indiana Recovery Alliance, parentheses JP, receiving an awarded amount of 2,500. And I reprinted the resolution, so you have it all, the correct one to sign.
And so we're going to, just to be formal, make sure we have that right. I'm going to ask for unanimous consent to amend that underlying resolution with that language as specified. Any objections?
No.
So ordered. So now we have that underlying resolution. Now we're, have read that in. We will go to public comment on that resolution. If you have comments on this, please come forward to the Naukewill to that podium or raise your hand on teams. All right, seeing none, we will go to a roll call vote on the resolution.
Counselor Iverson?
Yes.
Counselor Hock?
No.
Counselor Deckard?
Yes.
Counselor Crossley?
Yes.
Counselor Wiltz?
Yes.
Counselor McKim? Motion passes five to one.
All right, let's go to item B.
Counsel, I move to approve the opioid settlement review board's request for the creation of account law 30006 contractual and fund 1238-0000 opioid unrestricted and simultaneously approve an additional appropriation of $279,895.84 in the services category.
Second. All right. You don't want to add anything to this that's not been said? Okay. Questions, comments from counselors? All right, let's go to comments from the public. If you have any, come forward to that podium here in the Naukewill or raise your hand on teams.
I'm Linda Brady, Chief Probation Officer, and one of the applicants and recipients of the grant money. I do want to say, as someone who writes a lot of grants, it would be very helpful for the future to, to say, here's how much money is available here when it is, because this said 200, up to $200,000, but you weren't really sure when, what was the grant cycle? Most grants will have, here's the cycle, here's the start date, here's the end date, you have to have the money spent by X, and that sort of thing. And I also did notice they followed a lot of the procedures with the Sophia Travis Grant and the CARES Grant, and I appreciated that because both of those granting entities have done an excellent job for many, many years, and I appreciated that you followed kind of some of their procedures. But just knowing, as someone to write the grant, you want to know, if this is only $50,000, I mean, I, that's going to be given out, I wouldn't want to write for $200,000, so that would be helpful for the future. And that's it. Thank you.
Thank you very much for offering that. Other comments from the public? Seeing none, we will go to a roll call vote on this appropriation.
Counselor McKim?
Yes.
Counselor Wiltz?
Yes.
Counselor Iverson?
Yes.
Counselor Hock?
No.
Counselor Crossley?
Yes.
Counselor Deckard?
Yes.
Motion passes five to one.
All right, we'll go on to item C.
Counsel, I move to approve the opioid settlement review board's request for the creation of account law 30006 contractual and 30088 opioid Monroe County Circuit Court and fund 1237-0000 opioid restricted and simultaneously approve an additional appropriation of $730,913.16 in the services category.
Second. Add here?
No, thank you.
We do appreciate all the questions so far.
Wiltz has got more.
Sophia Travis, I believe, grants require a report at the end of the cycle. I'm wondering, is that how, are you requesting that?
It's written into the MOUs.
It's written into the MOUs?
Yes.
Okay. And do you have any criteria?
Reporting is written in.
So the MOU requires an annual report, even if the entity is going to spend it over two years, and it also requires the organizations to retain records, so that if the county were to ever get audited and request it send records, they would be, they would have to comply with that request. That, to encourage, not that I think we need to encourage, because I imagine all the organizations will just file the reports timely, and the MOU, it provides that if a failure to file a report or provide a report acts as a disqualifier for future funding.
Are there other, have you, have you thought about other ways to evaluate the success of these projects? So granted, the Sophia Travis doesn't do an evaluation, so to speak, but this is a lot more money, and given that we might be committing to another round of, you know, the number of players is not huge, so the likely, you know, the likelihood of a, a second round to a, to the same entity is relatively high. Have you thought about evaluation of, you know, the performance of meeting stated goals? I know that in Sophia Travis, that we have them list goals, so there's an opportunity for that. Just wondering what your thoughts are?
Yeah, for me, part of it is a global thing. I would like to see what happens in our community with regard to arrests related to substance use disorders. I'd like to see what happens with regard to recidivism for those who have gone through these kinds of things. I'd like to see whether or not we then have a reduction in other demands, such as, do we not, if people are in recovery, does our demand for syringe service program go down? I mean, there's so many metrics that we could be looking at if we get this right. One of the, one of the things I didn't bring up is one of the five principles that Johns Hopkins recommends for funding is to look at prevention. Well, through our Youth Services Bureau, and it's specifically aimed toward youth, we do that already. We already have certain things in place which make a difference in our community. So part of this is, I think that we need to start to, ourselves, look at what it's doing to our community. But yes, we've asked for people to, to give us reports on things.
I was going to respond to you. All right. So there are individuals on this body that are both on the CARES Board as well as the Sophia Travis Board that help analyze the way those grants have been done and come back. And the CARES Board has a pretty rigorous rubric that they use that, that we've been looking into adopting. But quite frankly, this is the first time we've done this. So we are...
We're refining as we go.
So all these comments are very helpful.
Yes.
Trying not to nerd out on this too much, but this stuff that I find very interesting.
Somebody has to pick up from Counsel Member McKim, so that's okay.
I'm not, I'm not as good at the spreadsheet. But what you're talking about, community-wide metrics, is a, it's a very different thing than looking at the individual contributions to the community outcomes. I will just, shameless plug for what I would have liked to have seen, that data analyst position would be able to look across the community and provide summarized data on those metrics. So I see this as being very linked, and we'll talk to you at some point maybe about how that might fit in future funding cycles, or how else we can get that funded. Because I think that the only way we're going to get the answers to, around those things that you've just listed, is to fund a position to look at that information and process it.
Again, we, we will have to follow the state guidelines that came out with opioid settlement money and make sure that it fits those things as well.
Right, right. And, I mean, if it, if it's funded a different way, it's funded a different way. My point still stands, though, that giving money to all of these organizations, we know they do good work, but we're not going to be able to document that good work without putting money to, documenting that good work. So however it happens.
Counsel Hock?
Yes, and just as a reminder, at the county commissioners' meeting, when this was all being established about who was going to be on the committee or so forth, there was a major discussion about the fact that people that would be voting on the committee was also the people who would be receiving the money. And so that's very different from the way most committees would be set up. And so I, I just, I just think in general, the council needs to take a strong look at where we can save, for instance, they're talking about what a great job the Youth Services Bureau is doing. Well, we know how much money is going into that, and we tried to reduce the, the yearly amount going into that so that we can pull it over to do some of the things we need to do with the jail, but we've got to replace that money. Are there things that we are paying for in other ways that we could use this money to make sure that we're coming out with an outcome that we are hoping to have? And so I, I know there was discussion at the commissioners' level about who was going to be on the committee. I don't know whether, I know most of you folks have real jobs and you can't watch the commissioners' meeting, but there you go.
Well, one thing I, I just want to say, to kind of piggyback on some of the comments, is that sometimes more eyes and, and metrics are a healthy thing. And I'll give you a good example of that. Over there at that table on the auditor's team, they watch us all. And I know, because when you're sitting in the rotation of council president, you get those calls, as I did earlier today, about this is not being, we got to fix this, we have to do that, and that's healthy and under our system. Our officers in the back, the leadership in the back, they watch each other, they've got body cams that watch things, those record things, and that can, you know, that, you always know that that's there, right, chief deputy? As a teacher, I will have to say that my classroom is one of the most watched thing, and we're not, I'm not just getting into the General Assembly there. I mean, the metrics on my students, the evaluations of my students, how I teach, teachers that come in and watch me and all that. And so I think sometimes more eyes can be better than none, particularly if we are a bunch of elected officials walking around using the word recovery and treatment like it's hello and goodbye. We need actual answers on what is, what the hell's happening half the time. And I think as a community, rather than just kind of sit and wring our hands and dispenser goes off, we have to understand that. There's an accountability factor that I think we can get in future iterations here as we move forward.
We do have a member of the auditor's offices, one of the ex-official members on this group as well. So they have been at the meetings with us.
Good.
And has, has Ms. Turner King in this situation.
Counsel McKim?
I'm sorry, I just wanted to follow up on a comment that Counsel Hock made that kind of surprised me. So there are members on the committee who are also recipients of awards?
There was there. There's not a single member of the committee that is receiving this award. And we had talked about conflict of interest issues, and Ms. Turner King, did you want to say something with that?
I can. So there is, so what was adopted was a list of conflicts. It identifies what would constitute a conflict, but at the end, if an individual, what happens is a member on the committee would identify, I have this conflict, but they do not recuse themselves from the vote. They still participate in the discussion, they still vote on the funding, and then each member documents in writing their conflict, that's forwarded to the commissioners for consideration when approving the recommendation of the committee.
Thank you.
But they're still there and, and create, if they're present. I mean, if I was sitting here and say, come on, let's vote for this, because I won't vote on it, but I really could use the money, because that's where the money's coming in to pay my salary. You see, I, I just, look, I listened to the meeting, I thought it sounded out of place, and I don't know what the answer to that is, but I didn't think it was appropriate, so.
We have before us the underlying appropriation. Counselors, any further comments on that? Seeing none, let's go to public comment on the item. If you have it, come forward to the podium or raise your hand on teams. Go to a roll call vote.
Counselor McKim?
Yes.
Counselor Hock?
No.
Counselor Iverson?
Yes.
Counselor Wiltz?
Yes.
Counselor Crossley?
Yes.
Counselor Deckard?
Yes.
Motion passes five to one. Thank you all.
Thank you very much. Appreciate it. All right, let's move on to, item eight has been tabled, the old eight has been tabled. Let's go down to number nine, request from the sheriff's office.
Counsel, I move to approve the sheriff's request for an additional appropriation and fund 1156-0000 firearms training, 1156-0000, and the amount of $20,000 in the services category.
Second.
Ms. Miller, welcome back.
Thank you. Good evening. Jordan Miller, Financial Coordinator, Monroe County Sheriff's Office Correctional Center, filling in for Jamie Yonkey. As you can see, this is a request for additional appropriation. Indiana Criminal Justice Institute, or ICJI, provides grants for training supplies and materials, and in this case, we're interested in purchase of ammunition.
Questions or comments from counsel? No questions or comments from counsel? I'll go to public comment. If you have public comment on this item, come forward here in the Naukewill or raise your hand on teams. All right, seeing none, we'll go to a roll call vote.
Yes.
Counselor Iverson?
Yes.
Counselor Deckard?
Yes.
Counselor Wiltz?
Yes.
Counselor Crossley?
Yes.
Counselor McKim?
Yes.
Motion passes unanimous.
All right, we'll move on to item... All right, we'll move on to item B.
Counsel, I move to approve the sheriff's request for an additional appropriation and fund 8103-0000, Operation Pullover, and the amount of $9,598.81 in the personnel category.
Second.
Okay, this is essentially a housekeeping item. As you'll notice, the next item is kind of paired with this. The Operation Pullover, which is essentially the campaign name, the tool for data purposes, reporting tool, is the Comprehensive Highway Injury Reduction Program, or CHIRP. Funds are provided, grant funds are provided, and those are initially paid from our county general overtime line until those funds are received, in which, at which point we allocate or have appropriation for those to come from the Operation Pullover Fund.
Questions, comments from counselors? I see a question from Kim Schell or Molly Turner King.
So, for clarity, the CHIRP grant is a grant that we share with all local law enforcement officers. So, Bloomington Police Department manages the grant, so there's somewhat of a delay because, in receiving the funds, because it first goes to the city and then the city allocates it out.
Correct, thank you.
I think it's honored to many of a council leadership meeting for about 95 minutes worth of conversation. So, I remember this one. Any other questions or comments from counselors? Are we on the right path? Let's go to public comment. If you have any, come forward in the Nat U Hill to that podium or raise your hand on teams. Seeing none, let's go to a roll call vote.
Counselor Decker?
Yes.
Counselor McKim?
Yes.
Counselor Iverson?
Yes.
Counselor Wiltz?
Yes.
Counselor Crossley?
Yes.
Counselor Hawke? Motion passes unanimous.
At item C.
Counsel, I move to approve the sheriff's request for deappropriation and fund 1,000-0005, County General Sheriff, and the amount of $9,598.81 in the personnel category.
Second.
As previously mentioned, this is where those, that funding was paid initially, so we're, we appropriated from OPO, and we're now deappropriating from county general.
Any questions or comments from counselors? Seeing none. Do we have any comments from the public? If you do, come forward in the Nat U Hill to the podium or raise your hand on teams. All right, seeing none, we'll go to a roll call vote.
Counselor Iverson?
Yes.
Counselor Hawke?
Yes.
Counselor Decker?
Yes.
Counselor Wiltz?
Yes.
Counselor McKim?
Yes.
Counselor Crossley?
Yes.
Motion passes unanimous.
All right, the chair will ask Counselor McKim to take the gavel and preside until exhaustion.
Thank you. I am honored to accept deputization as chair. Okay, so now we're on to item 10A, which is from the Monroe County Correctional Center.
Counsel, I move to approve the jail's request for additional appropriations and fund 1170-0380, Public Safety Lit Jail, and the amount of $25,000 in the personnel category and $35,000 in the services category, for a total appropriation of $60,000.
Second. Okay, we have a motion and a second. Mr. Miller.
Thank you. Just for clarity, we did have some associated deappropriations lined up, just to make certain we had that funding available, but fortunately, some intelligence staff members from the auditor's office kind of gave us some clarity on that. Basically, the part-time, speaking on that, last year, we increased the hourly rate from 2366 to 2567, and as a result, that essentially impacted the budget for that part-time line, and it's so, which would result in the additional desire for that $25,000. As far as the meals for prisoners, I spoke during the budget sessions, kind of gave a, the statement that we believe we would need some additional funding for the meals for prisoners, and of course, as you can see here, that amount turned out to be $35,000.
Thank you. Comments or questions from the right? From the left? All right, we'll go to the public. If any members of the public want to speak to this item, please approach the lectern here in the Nat U Hill room or raise your hand on teams. Seeing none, we'll do a roll call vote.
Counselor Wiltz?
Yes.
Counselor Iverson?
Yes.
Counselor Hawke?
Yes.
Counselor Decker?
Yes.
Counselor McKim?
Yes.
Counselor Crossley?
Yes.
Motion passes unanimous.
I believe we have another item that we added at the beginning to.
Counsel, I move to approve the jail's request to amend the 2025 Salary Ordinance and Law 17801, part-time hourly to a range rate of $14 to $26.40 nonsense an hour, per hour.
Second. We have a motion and a second.
Thank you. As I just kind of briefly touched on, this is our interest in increasing the max range for our part-time hourly line to be congruent with that of the base rate for a minimum correction officer. They're essentially doing the same duties and responsibilities, so we believe that they, they should be paid as such.
Thank you. Comments or questions from the left? No, from the right? No. We'll go to the public. If any members of the public want to speak to this item, please approach the lectern in the Nat U Hill room or raise your hand on teams. Seeing none, we'll do a roll call vote.
Counselor Hawke?
Yes.
Counselor Wiltz?
Yes.
Counselor Iverson?
Yes.
Counselor Decker?
Yes.
Counselor Crossley?
Yes.
Counselor McKim?
Yes.
Motion passes unanimous.
Okay, so no further reading is needed. Thank you very much.
Thank you so much.
Okay, now we move on to the Convention Visitors Commission. So, we'll begin with fund-to-fund transfer.
Counsel, I move to approve the Convention and Visitors Commission request for fund-to-fund transfer of cash in the amount of $424,236, oh, excuse me, $236.00 nonsense from the fund, from fund 1127-0000, Convention Visitor and Tourism, to fund 4602-0000, Convention Center debt.
We have a motion?
Second.
We have a motion and a second. Mr. Campbell.
Yes, Mike Campbell from the Convention Visitors Commission. Thanks for having me today. Here today, and the reason for coming before you is it's, we're at a point where we feel we're able to pay off the existing loan on the Convention Center and the adjacent property purchase that was started back in 2010. This was for the purpose of eventual Convention Center expansion, and we're at that point. So, we are asking for a transfer of funds in order to, to affect that payoff amount in the amount of the transfer of 424,236.09 from our general fund or our fund 1127 to our debt fund of 4602.
Thank you. Comments or questions from the right? From, from the left?
Great news. I would just say that it's awesome to think of what can happen in a four-year term in time, and if you think to where we were four years ago versus now, in all manners of the word Convention Center, it's, it's good to see things happening and have good reasons for you to be before.
I agree. This is just one of multiple, I feel like, pieces of substantial progress that are made towards bringing our expanded Convention Center into reality. I, you know, I am so appreciative of all the bodies and people who have had to work together to get to this point, and I know there's still a lot, a lot of work to be done, but I, you know, I appreciate the Board of Commissioners for their support of this project, the Convention Visitors Commission, you know, this county council, the mayor, the city council, I, you know, I, I really feel like we're on the right track, and this is really one of the things that I really, really wanted to make sure was on the right track before I retire in just a few days. And this is a very tangible step. Can you quickly go over how the, and I know this would really probably better be a question for Jeff Cockrell, but how, the property, essentially what's going to happen to the property once this debt is paid?
So, that's a very good question for Jeff Cockrell.
All right, all right.
But as I understand it, with this purchase, that land would, would go back to the county, and then from there, that pathway as to how it gets allocated for the expansion of the Convention Center and their related properties surrounding that are still yet to be, does that go to the CB, CIB or, or a different pathway? That's something else. I do hope and trust that these, this was purchased with inkeeper's tax, with the express purpose of support and expansion of tourism in Monroe County. We're a large economic driver and add a lot to this community and, and hope that that's, those properties are taken with that in mind.
And the Convention and Visitors Commission, which I am a member, we took a resolution to, approved a resolution to essentially make that statement as well, so, thank you. All right, are there any members of the public who'd like to speak to this item? If so, come up to the lectern in the Nat U Hill room or raise your hand on teams. Seeing none, we will do a roll call vote.
Counselor Decker?
Yes.
Counselor McKim?
Yes.
Counselor Iverson?
Yes.
Counselor Wiltz?
Yes.
Counselor Hawke?
Yes.
Counselor Crossley?
Yes.
Motion passes unanimous.
One more piece to this proposal.
Counsel, I move to approve the Convention and Visitors Commission's request for an additional appropriation and fund 4602-0000, and the amount of $758,844.77 in the services category.
Second. We have a motion and a second.
So, this will raise the limit of what we're able to expend in, in this calendar year, and this amount that's requested will allow us to pay off the payoff amount that's due on January 1. So, the amount that we just transferred plus what's already in that 4602 fund equal the amount for the payoff.
Thank you. Yes, please.
I don't, I don't want to belabor the point, but it is remarkable, the stewardship that you've, you've embodied for our community over these funds, because I was on the CVC during the pandemic, and it was terrifying. You didn't seem to be terrified. You seemed to be calm, cool, and collected the entire time, and if there's anybody who rivals spreadsheets, I, Counselor McKim, I think we're looking at it right here.
Jeff and I are a kindred spirit.
Mr. Campbell's a whiz with his spreadsheet as well. I really just want to give you kudos for your sound stewardship of, of the finances surrounding this, this particular, you know, the debt fund, but also the Convention Center funds in general. It's remarkable and very much appreciated.
Iverson, did you have a comment?
Oh, thumbs up.
Okay, great. Anybody else on the left?
Congratulations. Debt being paid off.
Yeah, should we have a mortgage burning?
Good job.
Then we'll go to the public. If any members of the public want to speak, please approach the lectern in the Nat U Hill room or raise your hand on teams. Seeing none, we'll do a roll call vote.
Counselor Hawke?
Yes.
Counselor Crossley?
Yes.
Counselor McKim?
Yes.
Counselor Iverson?
Yes.
Counselor Wiltz?
Yes.
Counselor Decker?
Yes.
Motion passes unanimous.
Thank you. And we're not even to our recess point yet, so we will move on, if that's okay with everyone. All right, so now we have a whole bunch of additional appropriations for the end of the year. So, we'll begin with the Highway Department.
Counsel, I move to approve the Highway Department, Highway's request for an additional appropriation and fund 1108-0530, bid deposit and bond holding, and the amount of $389 in the services category.
Second. Oh, sorry. Sorry, force of habit. We have a motion and a second. Ms. Ridge.
Yes, we are needing to appropriate this into a line to pay back the motor vehicle highway fund for necessary road repairs that was caused from the logger that was not bonded for that road. So, they, we were using cash from another road that they bonded on and appropriate it to pay the highway back for their services and labor and materials for repairing the road.
Okay. Comments, questions from the right? From the left? I'm glad you have a few other items here, because if you had stayed here for a couple of hours for $389, I would have felt really, really bad. Okay, we'll go to public comment. If there are any members of the public who'd like to speak to this item, please either approach the lectern in the Nat U Hill room or raise your hand on teams. Seeing none, we'll do a roll call vote.
Counselor Crossley?
Yes.
Counselor Hawke?
Yes.
Counselor Wiltz?
Yes.
Counselor Iverson?
Yes.
Counselor McKim?
Yes.
Counselor Decker?
Yes.
Motion passes unanimous.
The next one from Highway.
Counsel, I move to approve the Highway's request for a fund-to-fund transfer of cash in the amount of $21,593.10 from fund 1169-0000, local road and street, to fund 8165-0000, Vernal Pike.
Second. We have a motion and a second.
So, we paid our construction match when this project was awarded. We were unable to pay the remainder of that out of our cash until we got the December settlement, which I believe I looked at, and that was today. So, we're using partial funds from the local road and street budget to help fund that Vernal Pike project, just so we can keep our other commitments through the RDC board for STEM, fire truck, bond payments and such. So, the local road and street is just assisting that fund to help pay that much.
Okay, let's see. Any comments or questions from the left? Please.
I would be, this is not completely related to this. Down the road sometime, I would be interested if you ever see a number on usage of Vernal Pike that either going up or down, just as people settle into all the changes. Very curious about that, because I've noticed traffic patterns myself, and I'm just wondering if there's any, if we ever get anything or see anything or know anything on that.
Yeah.
Questions from the right? I am definitely glad that, I'll just say that I'm glad that the Redevelopment Commission is keeping its commitments to the fire trucks and the STEM project that RBB, I think that's, I mean, both of those, I think the public would very much appreciate those expenditures. So, I'm glad that this can work out and we can meet the mission of the TIF and also support the surrounding community. We'll go to public comment. If there are any members of the public who'd like to address this item, please approach the lectern in the Nat U Hill room or raise your hand on teams. Oh, please, go ahead.
Party, can you pull your mic around? You're not being picked up, sorry.
Trying to avoid this. The settlement, you're saying this is tied to settlement. Do you know if that money's available yet?
I looked at, paying to the 4920 West Side TIF.
Would you have a comment, too?
Settlement has been distributed and reseeded.
Thank you. All right, we'll do a roll call vote.
Counselor Iverson?
Yes.
Counselor Crossley?
Yes.
Counselor McKim?
Yes.
Counselor Decker?
Yes.
Counselor Wiltz?
Yes.
Counselor Hawke?
Yes.
Motion passes unanimous.
All right, we have another one from the Highway Department.
Counsel, I move to approve the Highway Department's request for a fund-to-fund transfer of cash in the amount of $2,468,178.87 from fund 4920-0000, West Side- in the amount of $2,468,178.87 from Fund 4920-0000 Westside Economic TIF to Fund 8165-0000 Vernal Pike.
Second.
We have a motion and a second.
And this is the second part of the transfer from the cash to pay for our construction match for that project.
I guess it is worth having you here for a couple hours for two and a half million dollars.
And to say I've enjoyed working with you, Jeff. You've been a big supporter, so keep the weekend texts coming, checking on my projects. 8:00 AM on Sundays is great.
That's my chance to walk on the roads.
I agree.
All right. Well, I'm embarrassed now.
Me too embarrassed. You've been a super big supporter of highway and roads and the bridge projects. And from day one, from taking this position, you have helped me a lot, so I really appreciate it.
You have done an amazing job for this community. Questions or comments from the right? From the left? Okay, are there any members of the public who'd like to speak? If so, please approach the lectern in the NatU Hill Room or raise your hand on Teams. Seeing none, we will do a roll call vote.
Counselor Deckard.
Yes.
Counselor Wiltz.
Yes.
Counselor McKim.
Yes.
Counselor Iverson.
Yes.
Counselor Hawke.
Yes.
Counselor Crossley.
Yes.
Motion passes unanimous.
Can't wait to walk this road. All right, let's move on. I believe we have some items from the probation department.
Counsel, I move to approve the probation department's request and fund 4924-9625 probation cares grant, the creation of a new account line as set out on the agenda and to simultaneously approve additional appropriations in the amount of $750 in the supplies category and $1,600 in the services category for a total appropriation of $2,350.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. Ms. Brady.
Thank you. This is, that's right, the team. I'm Linda Brady, the Chief Probation Officer, and to my left, this is Anthony Williams, to my right, Becca Streit. They're both Deputy Chief Probation Officers, and Becca's also our Community Corrections Executive Director. And they are big time important grant writers and grant managers. So we're here tonight with a lot of grants to get appropriated for next year. So tonight, we have about $1.9 million to be appropriated in various grants. Most of those are from the Indiana Department of Correction, from the Indiana Supreme Court, and then one from Monroe County Cares. Not for tonight, but we do have an additional, several grants for 2025 that will be coming up, about $130,000. So if you add tonight's grants plus that, we're up over $2 million in grants for the probation department for 2025. And I do want to say that's why we have 28 budgets, and it takes a village to manage all those budgets. And that's, you're seeing the leadership team here, they are excellent at doing that. So just to get started, I don't know if you're ready for the first one, the Community Transition Program, or do you?
Crime and Cares.
Cares.
Oh, Cares goes first, okay. All right. Cares Grants, we apply for this every year. We have two grants, they total $2350 for breathalyzers and for instant cups for drug testing for problem-solving court, and it helps reduce the cost for people in problem-solving court for drug testing.
Questions or comments from the right? From the left? Okay, we'll go to the public. Any members of the public who'd like to speak, please approach the lectern in the NatU Hill Room or raise your hand on Teams. Seeing none, we'll do a roll call vote.
Counselor Crossley.
Yes.
Counselor Iverson.
Yes.
Counselor Hawke.
Yes.
Counselor Deckard.
Yes.
Counselor Wiltz.
Yes.
Counselor McKim.
Yes.
Motion passes unanimous.
Okay.
Next one.
Okay, Counsel, I move to approve the probation department's request and fund 1123-9625 Community Transition Program, the creation of new account lines and to simultaneously approve additional appropriations in the amount of $15,000 in the supplies category, $30,000 in the services category, and $5,000 in the capital category for a total appropriation of $50,000.
Second.
Sheena, second.
Okay, the Community Transition Program is an early release program for the Department of Correction, and in order for a person to be eligible for that, a judge has to accept them onto early release, and we do the supervision. In our county, we don't have a residential facility, so they're normally released onto our home detention program. And the DOC reimburses Monroe County $25 a day for each day the offender is on our supervision. In 2023, the DOC reimbursed us $13,000 roughly dollars, and so far in 2024, $14,000 is what we've been, we've received, and the cash balance is $68,640 at the end of November for that. So again, this is not a grant, it's a reimbursement. For next year, the DOC might be changing how we do this. They might be making us put this money into project income, to be determined. Becca has some instruction on that.
The DOC is coming up with some new rules, as DOC does, but we can collect the CTP money, but it must then be put into project income. But we're still awaiting further instruction.
Thank you. Comments or questions from the left? Yes, Ms. Wiltz.
Approximately how many people are in this program in our county at any given time?
It looks today, we have had six this year, which is more than we've had in the past years. Part of that is due to about two or three years ago, we changed our criteria of who can come onto CTP. Prior, it was pretty restrictive, but our philosophy has changed that if they're going to be released into our community, why not help them get started when they are released from prison?
Other comments from the left? From the right, yes?
Yes, and this is something I've mentioned in the past. I know there were some changes at the state level about if we had programs for them here that even though they were not originally placed in DOC by Monroe County, they could come back to Monroe County under certain circumstances, and the judge had to accept what circumstance. Is this the program they were talking about at the state level?
I do not believe so. Here locally in Monroe County, for somebody to be on the CTP program, they have to have had a residence here or were sentenced through the Monroe County Court prior to incarceration. So we are only accepting clients into CTP who are community members.
And the reason why I also think about that is that, as we all recognize, counties around us are sending their problem children to Monroe County because we have services, then they get in trouble, then they get sentenced here. And so then when they are released back from DOC, they're coming back here, and the other counties just get out scot-free. I mean, I don't know what the answer is, but I just want to share that concern because I think there's a lot of people in this county who think that no matter how hard we try, we just cannot keep up with the inflow of the other counties and perhaps the other states sending us all their problem children. And when I say children, I mean adults. And we want to help everyone, except that then you run out of money and people to provide all those services. So I just wanted to share that. I appreciate what you're doing. What would we do if we didn't have community corrections? I do not know.
Agreed. Okay, are there any, if there are any members of the public who'd like to speak to this item, please approach the lectern in the NatU Hill Room or raise your hand on Teams. Seeing none, we'll do a roll call vote.
Yes.
Counselor Iverson.
Yes.
Counselor McKim.
Yes.
Counselor Hawke.
Yes.
Counselor Crossley.
Yes.
Counselor Wiltz.
Yes.
Motion passes unanimous.
Okay, we have another, the pretrial program grant.
Counsel, I move to approve the probation department's request and fund 9135-0000 Pretrial Program Grant, ODD, the creation of new account lines as set out on the agenda and to simultaneously approve additional appropriations in the amount of $228,772 in the personnel category.
Second.
We have a motion and a second.
Okay, this is the first of five grants we're going to talk about tonight that is funded by the Indiana Office of Court Services or the Indiana Supreme Court, and it comes out of the state budget. The Indiana Office of Court Services received grant requests for this funding almost double the amount of funds that they have. So huge, huge interest in counties getting money for various programs. Therefore, they instituted some caps. So they capped salaries with only a 3% increase allowed. No new positions were allowed. They capped fringe benefits at a rate that was below what our fringe benefits are, and they also capped client incentives. Client incentives are really important, especially with our problem-solving courts. Things like bus passes and gas cards to help clients get to their required court hearings, treatment, probation appointments and such. So we were grateful for the money we got, but we realized there's a lot of competition out there for this. So with the pretrial grant specifically, we did receive an increase of $21,000 this year, which was a 10% increase from the year before. And it funds a probation officer, a public defender salary, and a part-time probation officer assistant to do the data entry for the program. And Anthony, was it last year that they didn't fund the full public defender or the year before?
Two years ago.
Two years ago. Those of you who've been around maybe remember they cut funding for the public defender. This year, it's back up. We just never know what is going to happen with that, but that's what it funds. If you want to talk about the stats?
Oh, this was just a quick perspective of what the pretrial program has done. So our pretrial program started October 1st of 2016, and as of today, we've assessed nearly 13,000 defendants. So that's 13,000 people that we've made contact with who have been arrested and have gone before the judge to determine release decisions.
We are, unlike some other counties, they'll only, there are some counties that limit their pretrial program to felony offenders. Some only limit those to people who are still in jail the next day, whereas we assess everyone so that we don't have people who can afford to get released from jail say, oh, they just don't get assessed. No, in our county, we assess everyone, so even if they may bond, we're still going to assess their risk so we can make a better recommendation to the court for their kind of pretrial supervision. So you're right, it's a lot.
Thank you. Comments or questions from the right?
Yes, it appears to me that this is, council leadership had indicated with the email that was sent out, these are some of the programs, it's a concern that we might not be able to continue to receive the funding we have in the past because they're looking at reduction in expenses in different levels. So that's why it's so important for us to look at every opportunity we have that we can add to resources needed that we might not be getting in grants in the future.
I'll answer questions from the left. Yes.
Counselor Hawke has made a reference to some comments that I think came out of an email that I had sent, but essentially, and I just want to say this publicly, I know you're always watching for where grants are coming from or not coming from and trying to detect that, and you have a tremendous record with it. I am concerned, as a local official, that in our federal discussions right now, there's talk of cutting $2 trillion from the budget. And I know that that's not going to be a U.S. Senator's salary, that's going to be programs that are grants that come to local government. I just, if I had to bet my mortgage, I think I'm right on it. And then simultaneously, the state is talking about taking us back from 2024 property tax levels down to 2021. And I've noticed in my conversations with legislators of both sides of the aisle, that conversation in the preceding six months has gone from, well, that wouldn't have, to be prepared for something. And that tells me big things are happening. And so all these years that I and other counselors have said, thank you for going after these grants, I'm throwing this out there because I don't want to panic anyone. I hate when politicians or anyone in authority panics people. But those numbers federally, which will definitely not be things that they want, right? And the things at the state level that are kind of being flippingly thrown about, we're talking about the way that we do what we do here locally, and not a dime's wasted. So I appreciate you letting me elaborate on Counselor Hawke's comments on your item, which is not necessarily your headache now, but again, those are big dollars. And I'm watching a lot of billionaires sashaying around on Capitol Hill, talking about what will be $2 trillion that will be from here. I just know it, I've been around long enough to know that. So I appreciate my little tirade, Mr. President.
Thank you. Any other? Okay, please.
I want to make it clear, if we're supporting, helping the person who's paying the taxes, then of course I'm going to support that too, because those folks also need to know that we're thinking of them. When in, and I appreciate what council leadership has been presented, but it is up to us, the county council, who are supposed to have a strong hand on the money coming into this county and how we can make it stretch out to cover those things that we really need to do, we better be watching a whole lot more careful because the state's going to say, well, you've got all that opioid money, you've got this and that and the other money, what'd you do with it? Oh, well, we handed it out. We have to be absolutely hands-on for all of the dollars we can get our hands on to help out those departments that need it. My thought.
Any other comments? Let's move to the public then. Any members of the public who want to speak to this item, please approach the lectern or raise your hand on Teams. Seeing none, we'll do a roll call vote.
Counselor Wiltz.
Yes.
Counselor Crossley.
Yes.
Counselor Hawke.
Yes.
Counselor Iverson.
Yes.
Counselor McKim.
Yes.
Counselor Deckard.
Yes.
Motion pass.
All right, now we have the Community Corrections Grant.
Counsel, I move to approve the probation department's request and fund 9141-0000 Community Corrections Grant, the creation of a new account lines as set out on the agenda and to simultaneously approve additional appropriations in the amount of $1,49,167 in the personnel category.
Motion?
Second.
We have a motion and a second.
Okay, the Indiana Department of Correction, this is our largest grant funding that we receive. This particular grant is the first of four grants that we receive from the Department of Correction. The, in the past, they used to just give us one grant, now they are separate, so that's why you're going to have three more to appropriate. This grant supports the use of evidence-based practices, continuous quality improvement to ensure that probation and community corrections clients are receiving services that promote positive lifestyle changes, reduce recidivism, and improve community safety. The total grant award, $1,528.120, I think. It's the exact same amount we received in 2024. We've been flatlined at least the past three years and maybe longer because the state budget has not included increases for Community Corrections Grant. And as you know, we've talked about this before, the priority has been to build a new prison. Who knows what the priority will be this coming year? There'll probably be a new DOC commissioner because of the new governor, and so we won't know for a while what the priorities are going to be. know for a while what the priorities are going to be. Because of this grant flatlining, our project income, which is community corrections user fees, will have to absorb the increases in health insurance, self-funding, cost of living adjustments, and corresponding increases in FICA, PERF, and the accounting longevity pay. And our grant is personnel only. We don't have any supplies, any services, any capital. It's just personnel and, and it does not pay for any position under, under percent. It's, their positions are divided between the grant and project income, the user fees. So again, this is our, our largest grant. And just, and it does not fund all of the salaries and fringe benefits of any one person.
Comments and questions from the right?
I'll spare you.
Okay. From the left.
Congratulations, this is so important.
If there are any members of the public would like to speak, please approach the lectern or raise your hand on teams. Seeing none, we'll do a roll call vote.
Counselor Deckard?
Yes.
Counselor Iverson?
Yes.
Counselor McKim?
Yes.
Counselor Hogg?
Yes.
Counselor Crossley?
Yes.
Counselor Wiltz?
Yes.
Motion passes unanimous.
Still quite a few of these left. All right, let's, let's move on to the drug court grant.
Counsel, I move to approve the probation department's request and fund 9147-0000, drug court grant, ODD. The creation of new account lines as set out on the agenda and to simultaneously approve additional appropriations in the amount of $157,711 in the personnel category.
Second.
Motion and second.
I was thinking, what is ODD odd? Odd years, we have different numbers, odd and even. I'm thinking, what is ODD?
So it really is odd, not ODD?
It really is odd.
Okay, well, I will say that.
Yes, we changed, we changed the, the even and odd, or we have so far in the past with these grant, grant years. This grant pays for partial salaries and fringe benefits for one probation officer and two field officers for the drug court. And Becca?
The program, the drug court program started in 1999, and since then, drug court has graduated 541 individuals. So bravo to all those individuals for their hard, hard work in, in drug court.
The problem solving court, drug court in particular, plans to have a celebration for the 25th year of existence this spring, which more details to come.
And I would also add, this year, we had Indiana University complete an evaluation of not only drug court, but our other problem solving courts. It's one of the requirements to receive money from the Indiana Office of Court Services. And we just got the report today, so we're still sifting through almost 90 pages of an evaluation. But I bring it up because not only are these programs running, but we are truly evaluating and validating the work that's being done and making changes and improvements all the time.
Comments from the left?
That's great. I, I was just going to say, I appreciate the opening to the additional eyes to see what's going on, give feedback, evaluation, et cetera. My question is, earlier in the evening, I was kind of going off about recidivism raids and, and numbers that I, I had heard. Am, am I in the ballpark? Is that something that we could find out or, or be told about?
Yes, we can find that out. And in fact, I haven't gotten through the full report yet that was sent out today, but there is a section on there in recidivism, taking a look at the, the numbers.
And the only reason I ask this is if there are things that we always can replicate, there's no need for everyone to reinvent necessarily certain components. And the example I give, the first, when I first got into office, I came to see Ms. Brady, and I was out in your alls waiting room and going through the workbooks that you give to folks coming through your office. Those are some of the finest materials I ever saw. I almost wanted to stash some for myself to get through my tougher days. I mean, it was just quality material, and I thought, this is like one of the best kept, well, not secret for you all, but stuff like that tells me that there, there's just high quality things going on that we need to, we need to be aware of promoting, supporting, et cetera.
Well, when we get the report, it would be a public report. So when we get, get our way through it, we want to make sure there aren't any errors. But I, I can tell you, I don't know what this recidivism will show, but the very first evaluation we got of the drug court, it was required, we got a federal grant that funded the drug court in the early 2000s, that it showed that it reduced our program versus the, the control group, those who were eligible who opted out, that it reduced recidivism by 46%, which was a huge, I mean, if anything reduces recidivism by even 5%, that's significant. And 15% is good and 20% is excellent. 30% is like through the roof, but 46% was what was found. So it's huge, makes a huge, huge difference.
Comments from the left? Comments or questions from the right? If any members of the public would like to comment on this item, please approach the lectern or raise your hand on teams. Seeing none, we'll do a roll call vote.
Counselor Deckard?
Yes.
Counselor Iverson?
Yes.
Counselor McKim?
Yes.
Counselor Hogg?
Yes.
Counselor Crossley?
Yes.
Counselor Wiltz?
Yes.
Motion pass unanimous.
Mental health grant.
Counsel, I move to approve the probation department's request and fund 9149-0000, mental health court grant, odd. The creation of new account lines as set out on the agenda and to simultaneously approve additional appropriations in the amount of $49,376 in the personnel category.
Second.
Motion and second.
This grant pays for partial salary and fringe benefits for one probation officer.
This program started in 2015, and we've had 27 graduates.
Comments, questions from the right? From the left? Seeing none, are, are there any members of the public who'd like to speak? Please approach the lectern or raise your hand on teams. Seeing none, we'll do a roll call vote.
Counselor Hogg? Counselor Iverson?
Yes.
Counselor Deckard? Counselor Crossley?
Yes.
Counselor Wiltz? Counselor McKim?
Yes.
Motion passes unanimous.
Pretrial services grant.
Counsel, I move to approve the probation department's request and fund 9157-0000, pretrial services grant, odd. The creation of new account lines as set out on the agenda and to simultaneously approve additional appropriations in the amount of $271,866 in the personnel category.
Second.
Motion and second.
Okay, this grant pays for partial salaries and fringe benefits for four of the five pretrial probation officers. So basically, if we didn't have these grants, we wouldn't have a pretrial program. We're very fortunate to have these grants so that we do have a pretrial program.
Okay, comments or questions from the right? From the left? We'll go to the public. If there are members of the public who'd like to speak, please approach the lectern or raise your hand on teams. Seeing none, we'll do a roll call vote.
Counselor McKim?
Yes.
Counselor Hogg?
Yes.
Counselor Wiltz?
Yes.
Counselor Deckard?
Yes.
Counselor Crossley?
Yes.
Counselor Iverson? Motion passes unanimous.
Right, reentry court.
Counsel, I move to approve the probation department's request and fund 9166-9625, reentry court program, PSC. The creation of new account lines is set out on the agenda and to simultaneously approve additional appropriations in the amount of $12,620 in the supplies category and $5,000 in the services category for a total appropriation of $17,620.
Second.
Motion and second.
This is the first of four grants for our four problem solving courts awarded by the Indiana Supreme Court. Three of the four, including this one, received the same amount as they received in 2024, which is $17,620. And they fund such things as training for our problem solving court staff as well as the team members, for client incentives, also some money this year, this is new participant needs. So if somebody needed some, potentially some money for, I don't know, to get their GED or something like that, we might be able to use this money for, for that. So something to help our clients out. So it's a small amount of money for participant needs, but it's significant that we got it at all.
And this program started in 2014, and we've got 59 graduates.
Comments or questions from the left? From the right? Are there any members of the public who'd like to speak? Please approach the lectern or raise your hand on teams. Seeing none, we'll do a roll call vote.
Counselor Deckard?
Yes.
Counselor Iverson?
Yes.
Counselor Hogg?
Yes.
Counselor Wiltz? Counselor Crossley?
Yes.
Counselor McKim?
Yes.
Motion passes unanimous.
Mental health court. Sorry.
Yep.
Go ahead.
That's it. No, you're good.
There are too many of these.
Yes, so maybe so. It's the gift that keeps giving. Counsel, I am amending my motion for the probation department's request and fund 9168-9625, mental health court, PSC. The creation of new account lines as set out on the agenda and to simultaneously approve additional appropriations in the amount of $12,620 in the supplies category and $5,000 in the services category for a total appropriation of $17,000, $17,620.
Second.
Motion and second.
Same amount as last year and for the same things as the reentry court grant. Thank you.
Comments, questions from the right? From the left? Any members of the public who'd like to speak? Please approach the lectern or raise your hand on teams. Seeing none, let's do a roll call vote.
Counselor Wiltz?
Yes.
Counselor Iverson?
Yes.
Counselor Deckard?
Yes.
Counselor McKim?
Yes.
Counselor Crossley?
Yes.
Counselor Hogg?
Yes.
Motion passes unanimous.
Atrons court.
Counsel, I move to approve the probation department's request and fund 9170-9625, veterans treatment court. The creation of new account lines as set out on the agenda and to simultaneously approve additional appropriations in the amount of $86,974 in the personnel category, $12,620 in the supplies category, and $5,000 in the services category for a total appropriation of $104,594.
Second.
Motion and second.
Veterans court grant received the same base amount for supplies and services as the other, which, other three, which is $17,620. Veterans court also has a separate state appropriation in the state budget, and so they actually fund, in addition to the supplies and services, a case manager probation officer. And our veterans court case manager probation officer is also a veteran himself. So it funds the salary and fringe benefits.
And we've had 26 graduates since 2016 in that program.
All right, comments or questions from the right? From the left, yes, Mr. Deckard.
I was just going to say, I appreciate that very much, that number. I was going to add, I feel like between this court with its long-established history and our veteran service officer doing additional work more than what they've done, that we're, we're getting closer between that, the, the new facility that's coming in and all that, to some real synergy around veterans. I don't know where that's going to take us, but that's a good thing from, I think, where, where we started. And so I appreciate the long history that you all have in, in all of that.
Comments from the right? If any members of the public would like to speak to this item, please approach the lectern or raise your hand on teams. Seeing, roll call.
Counselor Hogg? Counselor Crossley?
Yes.
Counselor McKim?
Yes.
Counselor Iverson?
Yes.
Counselor Wiltz?
Yes.
Counselor Deckard?
Yep.
Motion passes unanimous.
All right, and this should be the last one of these, this big pile of money that the probation department is, is coming to us for?
Counsel, I move to approve the probation department's request and fund 9172-9625, drug treatment court, PSC. And the creation of new account lines is set out on the, on the agenda and to simultaneously approve additional appropriations in the amount of $12,620 in the supplies category and $5,000 in the services category for a total appropriation of $17,620.
Second.
Motion and second.
Before I do my final item, I want to thank you, Jeff, for your service. You've been an amazing liaison and good supporter for all things county government, and we especially appreciate your help with probation department and just want to thank you for your service. Last item, drug treatment court, $17,620.
Okay, comments from, questions from the right? From the left? All right, and I guess I will just say that clearly through just, just these items today, Monroe County residents can see how much we are benefited, we benefit from your professionalism, the professionalism and expertise and experience of your department. So thank you all. If there are any members of the public who'd like to speak, please approach the lectern or raise your hand on teams. Seeing none, we'll do a roll call vote.
Counselor Wiltz?
Yes.
Counselor Iverson?
Yes.
Counselor McKim?
Yes.
Counselor Deckard?
Yes.
Counselor Hogg?
Yes.
Counselor Crossley?
Yes.
Motion passes unanimous.
Thank you very much. I think at this point, we're probably due for a short recess. So let's, let's go into recess for 10 minutes. Please come back at 7:41.
We're going to bring this back to order. We want to thank Counselor McKim, not only for everything he's done, but the quickest jump through the agenda I think I've ever seen in my tenure on this council. It was very nice, and we're reflecting on why we didn't put you in this center seat more often over these years. All right, let's go to item 14 on the agenda. This is a request from the commissioners.
Counsel, I move to approve the commissioner's request for an additional appropriation and fund 4900-0000, employee morale in the amount of $3,500 in the services category.
Second.
All right, and I saw a hand raised from Angie Purdy with the county commissioners. We don't have your sound yet, Angie. Give us one second here. Might start doing the alphabet, and we'll test your sound as we get closer.
Guys have everything unmuted upstairs?
I thought we could hear a little bit.
I heard something.
It says I'm unmuted.
Now we got you, Angie. All right.
Okay. You were just ready for me to talk now?
Yes.
Yes, yeah, you can go right ahead.
Thank you, sorry. So yeah, this is just a request in our employee morale fund, and this is a fund that is based on donations, but primarily based upon revenues that we receive from the use of the vending machines. And we will use this, this is the money that is used to provide, the last few years has been cookies to county employees in years past. It used to be sufficient enough for dinners, but at this time, the, the revenue is significantly lower.
Angie, can you say that last couple sentences one more time, a little bit louder and slower? Because I think we're struggling to follow exactly what you said at the end.
Okay, sure. This is the funds, the fund that in the past, we have used for the cookies that are handed out at the end of the year to county employees. In years past, it used to involve a dinner. In years past, it used to involve a dinner. However, the revenue is such that we can't afford to do that now.
And these are funds from our vending machines in the courthouse and justice building and other places?
Correct.
Okay. We'll go to council questions or comments. I'm looking to my right. Looking to my left. I'm gonna try that. Done? We'll go to questions from the public, if you, or comments from the public. If you have them, come forward in the Natu Hill to the podium or raise your hand on teams. All right, seeing none, we'll go to a roll call vote.
I want to note for the record that Counselor Hawke did leave the meeting during the break. Counselor Deckard?
Yes.
Counselor McKim?
Yes.
Counselor Crossley?
Yes.
Counselor Iverson?
Yes.
Counselor Wiltz?
Yes.
Motion, passage unanimous.
All right, we go to B.
Counsel, I move to approve the commissioner's request for an additional appropriation and fund 1,000-0068, County General Commissioners, in the amount of $5,000 in the services category.
Second.
All right, Ms. Purdy.
All right, I think I've been to you guys a couple of times on this particular line. This is our other insurance line. And given the, some issues that we've had, we've had ongoing bills that have come in. And so this $5,000 should take care of us for the end of this year.
Go to questions or comments from the council. I'll look to my left. I'll look to my right. All right, we'll go to comments from the public. I'll look to the, if you have comments, come to the podium in the Natu Hill or raise your hand on teams. All right, seeing none, we'll go to a roll call vote.
Counselor McKim?
Yes.
Counselor Iverson?
Yes.
Counselor Wiltz?
Yes.
Counselor Deckard?
Yes.
Counselor Crossley?
Yes.
Motion, passage unanimous.
All right, we'll go to item C.
Counsel, I move to approve the commissioner's request for an additional appropriations and fund 1,000-0161, County General County Buildings, in the amount of $70,244.25 in the services category.
Second.
All right, Ms. Purdy.
All right, thank you so much. This one, this one has, was a bit of a, was a bit of a conundrum. Because what, we had been, what we would be invoiced was not what I had on my sheet. I had a conversation with the contractor and he's like, I've looked at this over the past few years. This is how we've been paid. And long story short, what has, what had happened is that we had been paying some of his, the expenses for our ASI contractor that does all of the cleaning in all the buildings, except for the justice building, health building, and showers, and provides the security at the justice building and does the maintenance for what I would call the justice buildings. So because we had payments coming out of a different account line, when I was using our prior budgets to do the additional, like a 3% increase, because per contract, they get same increase as the county employees, I wasn't capturing all of the actual budget. And so this is our attempt to get this back in line. And sadly, I'm afraid I'm gonna have to come back next year also because I am consistent in using not all the right numbers.
We'll go to questions, comments from council. I'm gonna look over here to my left. Think they're still thinking it through.
Sure.
Okay, I do, I think I have a question?
Yeah, Counsel Wiltz.
Just, so I'm understanding the request.
Mm-hmm.
You, you have a lot of money in this account, but this account isn't what you were using to pay these bills previously.
Okay, so no, there are multiple accounts that pay this contractor. And when I would look at the multiple accounts that are assigned directly to this contractor, when I would apply any kind of additional percentage increases, I was not capturing all of the expenses because we had been paying them for some other, when, when lines were running short, they would pay them from a different account line. And so those were not being caught when I did my budget for this particular contractor.
Have, you have, so I'm, I'm, okay, you have a cash balance of $2 million plus.
Sorry, that's the entire general fund.
Twenty, twenty million.
Twenty million.
Yeah.
Twenty million. And that's the entire, I don't have access to all that.
Yeah, that's just, that's the whole general fund.
That's the whole general fund.
I'm like, okay.
I don't have any funds to transfer.
I think I'm reading the wrong thing anyway, but so you just need $70,000 put into these different funds and you anticipate that you will probably need that same-ish amount next year to kind of get right with what, what you, what we owe this particular contractor to do these services.
I will come for an additional for next year. I cannot, I don't remember if it's the same amount. I don't, I don't want to speak to next year right now, other than letting you know that what I had requested to be budgeted is incorrect. Because I was consistent in not, I didn't realize to, to go to a professional services line to find expenses associated with this contract.
So just to clarify, is it, the, the amount that you asked for in the budget, it's too, too low?
Correct.
Okay, okay.
For these, for these, for these account lines. So it's all one, it's all county general. And so there's a multiple account lines. So what I'm requesting for now is to get us through the end of 2024, and then I'll come back in 2025, later in the year, to correct the 2025 budget.
All right. Other questions or comments from counselors? All right, seeing none, we'll go to public comment. If we've got them, please come forward in the Natu Hill to the podium or raise your hand on teams. Seeing none, we'll go to a roll call vote.
Counselor Deckard?
Yes.
Counselor Iverson?
Yes.
Counselor McKim?
Yes.
Counselor Wiltz?
Yes.
Counselor Crossley?
Yes.
Motion, passage unanimous.
Thank you, guys. And Jeff, I wish you all the best. You have been fabulous, as everybody has said. And you've been fun, because sometimes I know that I've texted you or you've texted me during a meeting. And I still remember the one time, I think it was during COVID, and it was one of your meetings. And I think you sent me a text that said something to the effect of, "Nice eye roll." And, but it's like, I need to watch what I'm doing.
It took us a while during COVID and video meetings to get used to our poker, maintaining our poker faces, didn't it? Well, Angie, you've been a pleasure to work with.
Thank you, thank you very much. I wish you all the best.
All right, I'm gonna actually, for item 15, I'm gonna pass this over to our pro tem, Jennifer Crossley, to, to take the gavel. I can offer the motion and to get you started. Counsel, I move to approve resolution 2024-47, approving a donation to the Bloomington Economic Development Commission.
Corporation.
Corporation. Sorry, I did that.
Yes. All right, thank you. We got a motion in a second. Now we will have Ms. Molly Turner King go ahead and present.
So this is a resolution, it's resolution 2024-47. It's approving a donation in the amount of $30,000 to the BEDC and kind of talk about a little bit more of what the BEDC does and how this money would help them. Ms. Jen Pearl is here.
See Ms. Pearl coming to the lectern, so, good evening.
Good evening, thank you so much. I'm Jen Pearl, I'm president of the Bloomington Economic Development Corporation. We're a nonprofit that serves all of Monroe County. And our focus is really on innovative economic development practices to attract and grow high-quality jobs for the community. We regularly work with members of council, the Monroe County Airport, county staff like Jeff Cockrell, Jackie Jellin, on economic development initiatives in lieu of the county not having an economic development department themselves. Commissioner Githens and Councilmember Crossley are members of our executive committee. And county-focused work really comprises a good portion of our time. We have a lot of great properties out in the community, on the county side, as well as major employment zones. We take investments and contributions to our work really seriously. So here are just a couple of highlights from our work this year. This year, the BEDC relaunched our website, bloomingtonedc.com, to promote opportunities in the community for employers to grow, alongside a multi-year strategic plan that's focused on growing our traded sector companies and attracting new ones through 2026. We convened community stakeholders and created resources to respond to Catalent's layoffs in the spring. So we're here for both good times and for bad times. We convened meetings featuring everything from our gubernatorial and local candidates to new stormwater ordinances, which was really well-attended, and included the county's MS4. We hosted workforce tours at companies including Cook Medical, Boston Scientific, and Phoenix. We convened over 80 members and partners for feedback on the CDO. And we supported Simtra on its $225 million investment and expansion earlier this year. And we had a really great groundbreaking, featuring members of the county in June. So we really appreciate the ongoing opportunity to partner. And I'm happy to answer any questions that you might have.
For that presentation, now we, I'll look to my colleagues to see if we have any questions or comments. To my left.
So I, I have a Danish last name and there's some Danish news in this community. Can you tell us what's going on?
So you may be referring to the public news of Novo Nordisk's impending acquisition of Catalent.
Do we know, like, the, the local, can you talk about, do you know the local impact and what you're kind of looking at and how you're thinking about this?
We very much welcome the news and we work with all companies to support their growth in the community.
Thank you.
But very much looking forward to that.
I, I just want to also clarify for, for anyone watching at home or anyone in here even, this, where this is donation, this reflects an effort by the county, this council, a year ago in our budget, to expend dollars towards the BEDC, which I mislabeled earlier, but I never mislabeled what they do, to support their, their mission. We do not have an economic development department. We probably years ago should have thought about those things, but we didn't and we deferred to others on that. Now, we have folks, good folks in the auditor's office that monitor the, the effects of that. But as far as folks going out, talking to people about, "This plant could go here. Elseville's got that." Shake hands with this person, IU could offer you this. Meet these synergies. We don't have that. And the reason that this is particularly important to me, I've said this before, but I'll say it again, is as one of the, the many townies that still remain in these parts, I can remember generationally our economic development history and looking at times when unemployment was high and unemployment became low. When we talk about Catalent and it being acquired, I think back to that very site there, when RCA was acquired, first by GE, later by Thompson, and then that plant did go away. We have to have people at the, from the county, from the city, et cetera. We have to have people always looking for the connections to these organizations, the organizations that need to come in, get our talent, some of the kids that, I shouldn't say kids, some of the students I teach, others. We have to have those things to be a promoter and a glue for that so that we can support our tax base. I will also say this, the BEDC is one of the first organizations I can recall to talk actively about the population realities of this community in that our, we are not necessarily replacing our workforce at a rate that gives me a healthy sleep at night. And if we don't do that, that means that it's harder when you go to talk to people about coming in here to work, because the numbers for the labor statistics are just not going to be there. The BEDC was talking about that before it was cool. And once the BEDC started talking about that, then everybody started talking about it. And I was in a meeting the other day and someone goes, "Well, our population pyramids." Look, we have to be real about this stuff. People are, people's lives, livelihoods are affected by it. We can no longer, as a community, look down lovingly, down Kirkwood, at Big Red and say, "It'll always be that way and we'll always be okay." Because every time this community has tried to do that, either showers brothers, RCA, life sciences, right now it's good, but you never know, right? And so we've got to always be looking out for the next thing. There were people in our seats in the day, or in other public seats, that did not think showers brothers would go away. And now it's City Hall, among other things. And so we've got to do these things for our workforce, our children, et cetera. And I, I don't mean to be dramatic about it, but having been in a family that saw the flip side of that when jobs do go away, there's nothing you can do at that point, other than Hail Mary and let's see what happens. And so I appreciate Jen being here, staying through a long agenda, thinking through these things. Because when it does happen, not happen, we have to be professional about that. So, and I think that's why we budgeted money for that. So thanks for letting me indulge that a little bit.
Well, and also shout out to the Indiana University IBRC that had that data out there. So this is public, I guess, public service announcement. Check out the data, we really need to work on this for our community. So thank you.
Counsel McKim?
Thanks. Yeah, I can't come anywhere near the, the great comments that President Deckard just made. But just a couple of quick ones. I do, you know, I do think, given the change in administration, there could definitely be concerns in the life sciences sector, you know, depending on what happens with vaccines, for example. And I, I think this is where we have to have somebody who's, you know, whose eyes on the, on the case. And so I, I think it's really important that we have an organization that is, you know, dedicated to, you know, not, not only looking to the future, but also working with our current employers in case there are changes in the landscape that negatively affect employment here. And then just one other quick comment, just to kind of follow up on what Mr. Deckard said. This, just, and just to kind of clarify to the public, this is spending money that is already in the budget for this purpose. So this is not an additional appropriation or throwing out money at the last minute or anything like this. This is something that was passed in last year's budget, or was passed by the council last year for this year's budget. And this is just executing on, on what the council had already appropriated.
Yeah, Counsel Wiltz?
And just to pick, to pick up on what Counsel McKim was saying, this is long overdue. And it's embarrassing that it took this long to get here and that it's taken a lot of grit from my colleagues and I appreciate that, getting it to happen. And hopefully, this will be something that we can perpetuate into the future, because that was the intent when we originally put down on paper that we wanted to support economic development in our community. So, thank you, I'm happy to, to support this.
Counsel Iverson?
I, I want to talk a little bit about why I'm supporting this tonight. And part of it is due to one of the plant tours that BEDC organized at Phoenix Enclosures, where we were able to see just how much technology has been put into what is, used to be an elevator factory. And, and just how much that has helped this community, how many jobs it's creating, and the growth that they're anticipating. and the growth that they're anticipating. Uh, that alone, uh, having my eyes opened, uh, at that plant tour, uh, is enough for me to support something like this. And certainly, uh, I'm looking forward to those types of jobs coming to this community. So, thank you for being here.
Thanks for joining the tour.
Yeah, it was a good one.
Thank you. Um, I have a question and a comment, but I'll start with my con, or question. Um, and I'm looking over to the table where Ms. Turner King and Ms. Woodruff is. So my understanding is this, oops, this resolution, um, should council pass it, the, then this goes to the commissioners to be paid as of tomorrow?
It will be in the claims document.
Got it, okay, awesome. Um, and the comment that I will, uh, make, and I won't be before you long, um, because all of my council colleagues up here basically said all the things that I'd feel. And I just wanted to thank you, Ms. Pearl, for your diligence. And we obviously have shown why the BEDC is such a vital and necessary component of Monroe County government. Um, and it's true collaboration. And you and I had chatted, uh, because when we had our executive meeting, I was a little embarrassed, um, to, you know, when we were talking about budgets and whatnot and projections for 2025, to see that, you know, the promise that the county made was not yet fulfilled. Um, but now, you know, we are going forth with what we need to do and we are doing that right now. Um, and so I definitely appreciate your due diligence and all the things that you have endured, um, over this past year to keep smiling and to keep coming to us and to keep talking to us. Um, that's really true collaboration efforts. Um, and then since he's the gift that keeps giving in county government, I appreciate, this is the part where I appreciate Councilor McKim, because last year when he was a part of the BEDC, um, when he wasn't able to step in and, you know, be in the meetings, I was able to step in and learn a lot of what the BEDC does. So I appreciate Councilor McKim giving me the opportunity to do that because now we've pushed enough to hopefully pass this resolution and go forth. So I appreciate you being here, thank you. Um, now we will go ahead and move to public comment. If we have anybody that wants to comment on this item, please come forward to the mat, you heal room, to the lectern, um, or raise your hand on Teams. I see one hand on Teams by the name of Joe. Uh, if you can unmute, you will go ahead and have a few minutes to speak. Joe, are you able to unmute? Or TSD, can we help him out?
You should have mic permissions, Mr. Joe.
Joe, I'm not sure if you heard, but you have mic permission, so you should be able to go ahead and unmute and make your comment for three minutes. We'll try to wait a few to see what will happen. Any other takers on Zoom right now? Nope. Want to give this person an opportunity to speak, but I, I know we need to move on, so, oh, maybe?
Maybe while we wait, Madam President, I had a comment I received. Uh, the chamber could not be here for public comment, but wanted to echo their support for this and apologize that they, they couldn't be here to offer, um, the support that they have in their partnership with the BEDC.
Yes, here, are they still not able to?
Hello, can you hear me?
Yes.
Oh, hey, fantastic, all right.
You have three minutes.
Hello, uh, my name is, uh, uh, my name is Joe Davis and I represent the, uh, TOP or the Taxpayer Objection Petitioners. And, uh, though we do like the idea of, uh, monies going toward the, uh, BEDC, the Bloomington Economic Development Corporation, we believe that there should also be a B S, uh, C D, uh, of Bloomington and Monroe County Social Development Corporation. And, uh, we have equal social needs in our community, in our county, that are as great as the economic development needs. And not all economic development is positive for the average person, the average taxpayer. We can just look at the 126.5 million dollars in tax breaks that were given out, uh, last year to for-profit entities, leaving the rest of us taxpayers to pick up the tab for our crumbling roads and str, sidewalks and streets and parks and so on. And we need to have the other side of the corn, coin, the flip side of social development. It is equal and as necessary. Thank you very much for listening to these thoughts. And next year, 2025, would be an appropriate time to create a new Bloomington and Monroe County Social Development Corporation so we can address the social needs in our community and let everyone know that we are not just about reckless development, we are about social development with a vision for the people. Thank you.
Thank you.
Please, may I, may I address that?
Yes, go ahead.
And I actually wanted to thank Mr. Davis for his comments, um, because we agree. And I think there's oftentimes, um, as people are learning about economic development, they may think, oh, this is growth for the sake of growth or unfettered capitalism or something like that. And if you talk to any of our counterparts around the state or around the nation that work on this, um, it is specifically focused on smart, responsible growth for our community. It is focused on not just any jobs, but jobs that raise wages for the community, um, as well as employers that reinvest in the community, such as the old Otis Elevator Plant in Phoenix, what you mentioned earlier, um, on tax break, or tax abatements, incentives that are provided. Um, it was actually on that tour of Phoenix that they said, hey, it was the local incentives that the county improved that enabled us to make the case to our corporate offices that we should make these investments here, which then increases assessed value and increases tax revenue coming into the community. And if folks are ever interested in doing any, like, economic impact analyses or things like that, um, to understand, uh, the impact on the community in terms of direct, indirect jobs and other tax, um, you know, taxes that come into the community based on these investments, we are always very happy to talk about that. The other thing is, um, you're seeing this locally and across the state, but we work with partners to support quality of life as well as other needs in the community. Our Economic Vitality Project, that many of you were involved in these past couple of years, highlighted, um, our progress and our needs on everything ranging from poverty alleviation to childcare, to healthcare and mental health care needs, um, diversity in the community, education and training. Um, and so, yes, we agree that these are critical components, um, of any economic vitality in a community. And we're just grateful, um, for any opportunity we have to talk about that. And, um, thank you for bringing that up.
You. All right, seeing no more comments, um, will Michelle, will you please call roll?
Before we call roll, I did amend the, um, resolution to reference the Bloomington Economic Development Corporation and not commission.
So do we need to make any, nope. Any?
Ask unanimous consent to accept the amendment?
That's it. Can I have unanimous consent from the council? Okay, seeing no objections, so ordered, all right. Now, can we have roll?
Councilor Iverson?
Yes.
Councilor Deckard?
Yes.
Councilor Crossley?
Yes.
Councilor Wilt?
Yes.
Councilor McKim?
Yes.
Motion passes unanimous.
Thank you so much and thank you, Ms. Pearl.
Thank you for the support. And also a huge shout out to Councilmember McKim. Um, we were so grateful to have worked with you all these years. And honestly, you were the first person I would call whenever I had tax questions and could just explain it in ways that no one else can. So, um, please add all of our names to the Jeff McKim, uh, fan club over here, so.
It's been such a pleasure working with you and your whole team at the BEDC.
Thank you, we appreciate you.
Back to you, Mr. President.
Okay. All right, we're at item B on, uh, the agenda under Legal Department.
Council, I move to approve Resolution 2024-45, and in our local agreement with Monroe County, the city of Bloomington, and the town of Elletville regarding animal control.
Second.
All right, uh, Ms. Turner King, you want to speak to this?
This is, um, our interlocal that we, um, have passed for quite some time, probably over a decade. It provides animal control, um, to county, city, and the town of Elletville. Um, it is slightly increased and that has somewhat to do with the distribution of animals amongst those places.
One have more animals than the other than?
I think it has to do with, um, the amount of, uh, services animal management offers in those areas.
Right, we'll go to questions, comments, Council Wilt.
Well, I think this is where Counselor Hawk usually mentions that it's hard to tell the dogs from Elletville. So I felt obligated to fill that.
City mouse, the country mouse, Elletville mouse, they're all there. We needed that right there. Are there any other council comments or questions on this? And this is routine, right? This is more of the same.
It's the same one that's passed annually, just with the cost increase.
Councilor McKim.
Second, or same as the first. Um, if anybody catches that reference. No, the, just, just actually to echo, uh, Counselor, um, Deckard just, uh, made it, excuse me, made a comment that, uh, this is a routine. At one point, this was not routine. It's been routine, it's, uh, it's been routine now for maybe 10 years, but this was remarkably controversial in the early days. Uh, and there were fights, uh, among counselors, between council and commission, between the city and the county. This, this has definitely been, uh, a very successful process ever since it was, uh, ever since this agreement came into place. But before the, and I think, I think it was Jeff Cockrell that really worked hard, uh, to bring it about. But, um, it really was, this was, you'd be shocked at how controversial funding for animal control.
That gives me hope for the future on, on the real tough ones.
We, we had one, uh, one coun, uh, former counselor that made a comment, something when we were discussing this. He said, you know, out in the country, we just have a way of taking care of these animal control problems. So we've come a long way.
All right, councilors, any other comments for the good of this item? Seeing none, we'll go, we'll go to the public if they have any lingering concerns or comments. They can do them now, this podium, or raise their hand on Teams. All right, seeing none, we'll go to a roll call vote.
Councilor Crossley?
Yes.
Councilor Wilt?
Yes.
Councilor McKim?
Yes.
Councilor Deckard?
Yes.
Councilor Iverson?
Yes.
Motion passes unanimous.
All right, we're going to move on to item 16. This is an ARPA item and I may be looking to the auditor's table quite a bit here on this one. We've got some moving parts.
Council, I move to approve additional appropriations from the American Rescue Plan Act, bond 8950-0000 and the amount of $172,618.91 in the services category.
Second.
All right, we've got a motion and a second. I believe some papers are being distributed by Carly from the auditor's office. Carly, what do we need to know here?
We received amended numbers today and those numbers are reflected in the document that is being distributed right now. The appropriation amount should be amended to $206,190.01 for the appropriation amount.
Council, I ask unanimous consent to adopt that amendment, as Carly just read. Any objections? So ordered, all right. So we've got, so this is the new amount and this keeps us right by things?
This is the sum of the unutilized funding from other projects in addition to the amount that was never appropriated in this fund. I believe there was consent at a previous meeting that any additional funding would be used for the septic program.
Councilors, do you have any comments or questions?
Counselor Iverson? And, and just so those at home can see what we're seeing, we're, we're seeing a, a list of, uh, lost revenue and restricted funds and the appropriate expended, unexpended, unobligated. And I think most of that is in the packet, correct?
This was sent out at 3:00 PM today after we received amended numbers from the commissioner's office. So I apologize for not having this digitally available.
That's, that's all right, I didn't mean to put you on the spot like that.
And, and we, Carly, just to clarify, that we, what I believed for all along, we, by the end of this year, must, this all must be obligated or we lose it. Is that correct?
That is correct.
We've largely got that done.
Yes.
And we're just cleaning up a little bit here, right?
We have, we have some contracts that are going before the commissioners tomorrow. Um, on the sheet in front of you, there are two gray boxes. The first box is council actions that are supposed to be occurring tonight, as long as you guys agree. And then the second box is commissioner actions that should be occurring tomorrow, so long as those are approved.
Any comments or questions from council at this point? Let's give them a second just to look. One thing I'll offer while, while folks are looking at that, I just want to offer a general comment. Where you see on this box, total received and appropriated 28,830,982 dollars. Those are, just for anyone watching at home, that's not something that we found in a piggy bank. That is federal dollars for ARPA post-COVID that have come to this community from, uh, our federal partners. The reason I bring that up is earlier you heard my tirade about 2 trillion coming off a budget and me being suspicious that's going to be some grants. I want everybody to look at that ARPA number for the last time because that's the last time I think you'll see that, at least in the term I just, uh, was elected for the next four years and probably beyond in my lifetime, uh, because that train is leaving. And we've spent that well and wisely and, and had a lot of help with that. But that's it for that show, so to speak.
It just occurred to me, I believe this was distributed via email as well. I'm not sure if anybody is on Teams right now, but if they're able to pull that up and share it, I don't know if that is the wish of council, but if you wanted it available to the public.
Yeah, Councilor McKim.
I guess I, this is sort of a comment question, just to confirm, and I believe this was said in the email, that the money that is, that we'd be appropriating for the county financial director is essentially re, re-journaling or repaying existing, uh, salary that's already been paid out. It's not a bonus for the county financial director.
Correct, and I, I'm sorry for not mentioning that. I was going to mention that during the category transfer portion.
Okay.
Um, we got notice from the commissioner's office that they were unable to, or they may be unable to obligate all of their remaining projects. And so we are using the salary from the financial director to pay out of, um, ARPA. And then the amount that was originally planned to pay out of ARPA for those contracts that may not be obligated by the end of the year, those will come out of county general, so we're just kind of flipping them around.
Is that, the alternative is we lose it?
Correct.
And we, or cannot use it, and so we must be crafty here.
Okay. Yeah, Councilor Iverson? Just so I, I'm reading this correctly, the amount that we are being asked for, to then, uh, put appropriate into septic is $206,190.01?
That is correct.
Okay. Okay.
It's a serious pass through here, doing good work. Other comments, questions from counsel? Counsel Crossley?
Never mind. I was trying to find, because I know in one of the last ARPA conversations, we talked about the generator for Steinsville. And I'm just trying to see on this sheet where that is.
That's got to be towards the very bottom in gray. I'm sorry, that's Hoosier Hills.
Yeah.
I seem to recall the emergency management had said something to the effect that they needed some time to figure a couple of things out, including mobility towards generator option and not necessarily tied down to bricks and mortar, so it needed more investigating on that part.
Okay, I remember we talked about it, because as we were talking about rural housing, that was one of the things, and we wanted, I know Counselor Hawk was very much interested in making sure that Steinsville got their portable generator. So I just wanted to make sure, yeah, lots have happened since then, so just trying to square things up, thank you.
All right, counselors. Angie's got her hand up. Go ahead, Angie.
You're muted.
Okay, how's that?
Yes.
Okay, my concern with what has happened here, I should have talked to Carly, I didn't, I talked to somebody else. And anyway, my concern is, if we do this transfer, or we change the project, there is no money appropriated in County General that I'm aware of, where I can expend these dollars out of for the end of the year. Because I have seven projects that remain, and I already have three contracts back, and I have half of contracts for the other. And when I spoke with Mr. Cockrell, he had said that as long as I thought, you know, we could get the contracts by the end of the year, then there wasn't a problem. And we had even actually talked about, if I have to, I'll just drive out to somebody's home to get their signature if necessary. So my concern here is, I know we don't want to give any money back, but I also don't want to, I have people who have been approved for projects, and it wasn't that we can't. The problem that had happened, that has happened, is we've operated all along under the presumption that the application and then the email notifications was sufficient to act as a contract. However, I think, believe Baker Tilly has since weighed in, and they wanted an agreement. So at the last minute, we are getting the contracts out, or these agreements out. So that's a lot of information I just threw at you, but the final, or my biggest concern is there has to be an appropriation in County General. If we take it out of, if we remove this funding from ARPA, because I've got people that need to get paid, and I'm just concerned about this approach.
Counsel Iverson?
Okay, that was a lot of information. I guess, let me start off with a question. You know, here we're seeing that we are deappropriating for rural housing $33,000 and $46,000. Is that about, I mean, do those numbers comport with what you were just talking about, or am I reading this wrong?
No, you're correct, so maybe I've misunderstood something, and I apologize if that's the case. We do need to deappropriate, because that amount will definitely not be expended. Maybe I misunderstood what was being said, and that I thought that the remaining projects that I have were going to be converted into.
If I can clarify what I think is being done here, and maybe this relieves you, Angie, or alarms you worse. I think what's being done is, we are saying for these where there's no contract, we're going to say, we're going to re-apportion the ARPA dollars so that we're paying for something we can verify now. And then out of general fund, we would say that the dollars that we are not expending towards, pardon me, the dollars we would not be expending out of general fund towards that position would then go towards these projects that are approved. We wouldn't be cutting any project or putting it on the butcher block. We would be keeping it, just trying to manage the money here so we're compliant. Carly, am I saying this right?
So Angie is correct that there is not an appropriation for these expenses in County General.
That's a big problem.
The goal of moving the salary into ARPA would increase the cash balance by the amount of the appropriation. And by increasing the cash balance, we are hopeful that in 2025, when the portal opens, that council would give the Commissioners an additional appropriation to cover these projects.
Oh, we can't do that. We cannot, absolutely, we cannot do that. I've got, these are vendors who have done work that needs to be paid, and the portal whole issue is in March and possibly April. And so there is absolutely no way that we can. These people have been told they can have this work done, and the vendor has been told, and some of them have actually started the work. And we cannot not, we cannot not pay these people.
I believe that we can do some in-house transfers in the beginning of the year to create budget for this. And then once the portal opens, we can appropriate the lines that we are pulling the appropriation from.
I have one, I have one project that I think I'm worried about, just because of the inability to communicate very well with the homeowner, it's been through the trustee. And that's a $9,000 project. If you're going to, I mean, if you want to do $9,000, because that one I know isn't going to happen until after the first of the year, that's fine, but please leave these, leave these other ones in play, and I'll have a contract, I'll have an agreement. Because I mean, we're just putting people in.
So basically, are you just asking for the amount that we would transfer from the County Financial Director to be reduced by $9,000?
Reduced to $9,000.
Or reduced to $9,000, okay. Sorry.
Counsel Wiltz?
Well, we're not to that motion yet, but.
Right, but we're still trying to wrap our head around a lot of this. I'm trying to, anyway. I do have a question, I really do. It's, two things, you said that you have people already working on this, but you don't have the funds obligated. So these are folks working on projects, but you don't have a contract with them, or?
No, the situation is, all along, we have operated under the premise that the application process that we have, the application that's in play, the quotes that we get from the vendors, we have operated up until like two weeks ago, under the premise that that was sufficient to be considered an obligated project. Baker Tilly, a couple of weeks ago, I believe it was, said, no, they would rather that we had, the county had an actual formal agreement, which the Commissioners passed last Wednesday. And I've gotten three of them back, I have seven outstanding projects. And I just have the one that I am concerned about truly being able to get obligated. But I, all the other ones, I can get obligated. And I know I can before the end of the year. But people have only had one day to do it, given everything else that was going on. So it's not that this money, we have operated as if this money was obligated. And it wasn't until two weeks ago, or whatever, that we learned that Baker Tilly wants an actual agreement. That agreement was passed by the Commissioners last Wednesday. And I got it out to these people Monday. What day is this, Tuesday, Wednesday? It's Tuesday. So I got it out yesterday, and I've got three back.
Counsel Iverson?
Okay, so you answered part of my question, you've got three back. How many contracts do you need to get signed in total in the next 14 days?
Four, I have seven projects.
So you only need signatures on four contracts?
Correct. And when I talked to Jeff about this earlier today, I said, he said, "Just leave it where it is." And I thought that that was a conversation he had with the auditor, but clearly, that's not true. Because, you know, obviously, the auditor has come up with another option. But if you wanted to take only the $9,000, just leave the other money, because I can get those contracts. But the one $9,000 contract, that's, I'm not sure that I'll be able to get it before the end of the year. I'll get it, but I don't know that I can promise that I would get it before the end of the year.
That seems pretty straightforward to me.
Thank you.
I agree, and I believe that Ms. Purdy can probably chase down a contractor too. I think she's got some experience in that field. My, so now I have another question, and it's because I think I wasn't paying as close attention when I was pulling up the screen share. But, so the $92,000, that's our pending council actions. Where, is that money all going into the pending Commissioner actions? I'm not sure what's happening there.
The $92,000 that you see as the net amount, that is the amount that was never appropriated. So we've always operated with less appropriation than what was the cash balance in the fund. So we are appropriating the entire cash balance tonight, and that's why you see that increase in the appropriation.
So Carly, I don't understand the two rural housing. I know the $33,571 is not going to be spent. But the $46,000, that needs to just be $9,000.
We were operating with the most recent information provided to our office. I apologize if there are any changes since that information was provided. I'm happy to make adjustments as needed.
Counsel Iverson?
If we were, the question is, do you, if we were to reduce that line to $9,000, what impact would that have on any, the County Financial Director position?
We would simply amend that amount, the same, so the positive and the negative would equal out. I will make it known that if those do not get contractually obligated for any reason, we would have to give the money back to the federal government.
Right.
Yes.
Yeah.
That's not going to happen.
I mean, what? Go ahead, Counsel.
And the other thing is, is that $9,000, if you put it into the Financial Director payment, we need to make sure that there, that there's an ability to pay that $9,000 in January someplace out of Q, or out of.
I don't, Angie, I don't think anyone's saying we're not going to pay for things that the county's in good faith gone out and done. I don't think that's the issue. I think the issue is, what happens if you encounter someone that says, "I'm not so sure about a contract that I'm getting on December 14th, and I may want to talk to my attorney about this until January 20th." In that case, you get into some weird, holiday travels, whatever it might be, we could get into some weird. So I think we're trying to figure out how, and I'm not sure I can get us back here on 28th of January to fix it on the 30th.
It's going to be okay, I mean, it really is going to be okay. You know, we just, it will be okay. And I know that we're, I understand about holiday travels and things, but we're talking about people who who don't have the money really for holiday travel. You know, so.
I agree with that, what I will say is this, we've been in this process for a while now, and we have not said to any other entity, "It'll just be okay." And so I just, and on contracts, I mean, my God, the meetings, I've been in the county discussing whether or not a contract must be there for this, that, or to build an outhouse. And so I just, I think some of this is a little bit of trepidation, because we're changing language at the end of the year, and so anyway.
I totally understand that, but my only, but my concern is, is if, if you, if you do do the changing, doing the category transfer as proposed by the Auditor's Office, then I am unable to pay vendors for the rest of this year, or for the beginning of next year, until the portal opens in allegedly March and/or April. And we can't, we can't do that. So that's why I'm a little, that's why I'm really stressed. And I know that, I don't like being in a position where I'm having to say, "We'll get it done." But I've been put into that position because we were operating one way, and then took a left turn at Albuquerque. And here we are, trying to redo this whole other way. And like I said, I don't, I have, you know, I can't promise you, I mean, that's absolutely true, I cannot promise you. But I mean, I'm going to.
About a solution.
Counsel Wiltz?
So if we were to do the transfer of the full $46,000 and everything as proposed by the Auditor's Office, and then also go ahead and make a category in-house, whatever, transfer, let's do something tonight that appropriates money for the purposes that she needs, so that she has that freedom in a different account. If moving this money this way is on the up and up, which I'm slowly kind of coming around to, then we should be able to also not have to wait till January to put the money in place for her to pay people.
We can go through and look and see if there is any department that has money that is still available for 2024.
Well, rainy day.
Or we've got rainy day.
We've got an appropriation on rainy day, right? I mean, we don't want to spend it, and hopefully y'all would top it off next year by that amount, but.
Right, and that's what I was going to say. If you, if you wait till 2025, when that budget's available, you can create an account line in, let's just say, the council budget. You create that account line, we have Sophia Travis money that is budgeted that's not going to be used until later in the year. Get that spent, and then you can, you know, additional appropriation it back later in the year for 2025. So it would be available in January if we did it that way.
I don't know how you do that, because, okay, so rainy day, I get rainy day, but, and Kate, I really, I'm with you on this. If there's a way to do it now, do it, but I think you have to show it as an additional appropriation. And that's not been advertised.
No, no, we wouldn't have to show an additional appropriation if we did an in-house transfer or a category transfer for services, because that's what it's going to be, is services. And that's where Sophia Travis is.
From where? Because I can't do category transfers between my two locations, like in County General. I can't do a transfer from my third. Like in County General, I can't do a, a transfer from my thirties in zero one sixty-one to my thirties in zero zero six eight.
Kim, you're talking within the council budget, right?
Talking within the council budget.
Kim's got a good suggestion.
I, I'm working within the council budget. We create a line that would be able to pay those contracts. Or we actually have a contract line. We could do an in-house transfer, move that money and pay those contracts out of the council budget, because I know that money is going to be available day one on January one.
I like that. Now, but, but I also have people that, do you have money I can spend this, at the, spend now? Because you know, because ARPA, we can continue to spend those throughout the last, these last two weeks of December. I mean, I could tell vendors that.
Can you spend it out of the ARPA line until the end of December?
The decision needs to be made tonight.
Yeah, this is, this is the eleventh hour.
Any claims submitted right now would be emergency claims.
Yes, and, and these are considered emergency claims for these vendors. And here's my, here's my question. Can you do the action to have it take effect? For whatever is remaining on January one, can you take the action this evening of leaving what's currently in ARPA for the rural repair? Leave it there and make the statement that by the end of the year, if, if it's not, if it's not in contract, then you would approve, you would approve however much needed to be transferred into. So the financial director would still be the fund, but I don't, my brain's not working, so I don't know how, if we're taking it from the financial director, but then also using it from the council's budget in 2025. Sorry, I don't know how you make that right.
Kim, did you have a suggestion?
I, I just don't feel like this is an effective way of doing things. I don't, you know, could, could Angie and, and Carly go off into, you know, into the hallway and talk to each other on the phone and come back with a solution that would work? Or, or Kim and, and Carly and Angie or something? But I, I think just doing it this way, we're not, we're not really getting anywhere. And we still have a number of things that we need to.
Yeah.
Yeah, I'm, I'm more than happy to. I'll talk to anybody.
Can I just propose a solution? I believe Jeff McKinnn mentioned that we have rainy day available. And so if we have any expenses in 2024 for these contracts that arise, we can pay them out of rainy day in 24. And in 2025, the remaining amount that needs to be paid will be paid out of the council agenda or at the council's budget. Is, is everybody agreeable to that?
Looking to my left.
Okay, so number one, I agree with, with Councilmember McKim. This is not the way to govern. This is very messy. I appreciate the suggestion. And I think that that would allow for any twenty, twenty-four dollars need to go out the door. They could be, they could be paid to vendors immediately, right?
That is correct, and we also can make corrections or adjustments after we find other places in the budget in 2024 to pay these out of.
Yeah, and then that gives some breathing room if, you know, all of this is assuming that the contracts aren't going to be signed. So I, I like having contingencies because quite frankly, Angie, I don't think it's fair to put you on the hook for over thirty-seven thousand dollars in the final two weeks of December. That, that seems very intense.
Appreciate that.
And we have this, we have the appropriation in, in rainy day. Now, the, you know, I, I don't think by our own resolution, that's really the way we want to spend rainy day. But, but it is an emergency, sort of. I mean, we, we kind of is an emergency. I just think everybody would have to agree to, to replenish rainy day, which, you know, we're certainly allowed to do as soon as possible in the new year by any amount that it's out.
Among the members that we have, yes, but there are one, two, three, four of that and three, one not here and, and two that will be different by then. So yeah, that's, that is a course. So if we were to proceed on that path, what do we do? Withdraw this motion here tonight and just let this be, or what happens?
The auditor's suggestion is to proceed with what is on the paper. I can tell you, I just ran a ledger report for general fund. And in general fund alone, the unexpended balance is currently over 1.9 million. I would find it hard to believe that in that 1.9 million, we don't have budget for forty-six thousand dollars.
But I don't have a budget for that. I don't have a line I can spend out of. That is my.
Do it. I agree. I agree.
Rainy day is the way to do it.
Rainy day.
Rainy day. All right.
I mean, are you okay? Do, do you see any reason, Angie, not to use rainy day?
Not, no, no, but my, just for clarification so that we're all on the same page. If we're using rainy day, my understanding is that we're going to do the auditor's request of the forty-some thousand. And what, that means that like tomorrow, if I need to pay a vendor, that's going to have to be paid from rainy day.
From this point forward, yep.
This, this takes the whole contract issue out of the ball of mud that we have.
Yes. And then that, all that money will revert to the general fund and can be used next year to transfer to rainy day to top it off.
And the vendors get paid in time for Hanukkah.
Yes, thank you. Thank you so much.
Okay, what, counselors, any, does anyone have anything they've not said in the last two hours on this?
Half hour of our lives.
I'm going to pontificate on Mr. McKim now.
One thing I like is, all right, let's go to the public for any comment they have, including if they just want to unmute and swear at us. They can do that. Now's your time. Come to the podium in Natty Hill or raise your hand on teams. Really waiting because this would be where we get our grades, friends. All right. All right. No grades yet. Let's do this. Let's go to a roll call vote on the motion.
Okay, so just so that we're clear, this is a roll call motion for an additional appropriation in account line three, six, seven, one of two hundred six thousand, one hundred ninety dollars and a penny. Correct? All right. Counselor Deckard.
Yes.
Counselor Iverson?
Yes.
Counselor McKim?
Yes.
Counselor Wiltz?
Yes.
Counselor Crossley?
Yes.
Motion passed.
Yeah. So now we will, let's see here. Now we move on to B, correct? Yeah, so we go on down to B.
All right, traveling. Counsel, I move to approve the following D appropriations and fund eighty-nine fifty dash zero, 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 American Rescue Plan Act. Account line twenty-nine, zero, zero, one, gun safes, forty-nine dollars and nineteen cents. Account thirty-six, seven, fourteen, program support, twenty-five thousand dollars. Account thirty-six, seven, twenty, jail locks, eight thousand two hundred. And account forty-eight, zero, zero, six, paving and drainage neighborhoods, forty-six thousand, eight hundred ninety-six dollars and eighty-eight cents for a total D appropriation of eighty thousand, one hundred forty-six dollars and seven cents.
Second.
Right. Carly, do you have anything to add here?
I believe we need to add the D appropriation of the rural housing part A and the amount of thirty-three thousand, five hundred seventy-one dollars and ten cents. This is the amount that per the commissioners is not set to be utilized for this program.
Counsel, I'd ask unanimous consent to adopt that rural housing part A, thirty-three thousand, five hundred seventy-one dollars and ten cents into the motion. Any objections? So ordered. All right. That said, any discussion on this underlying D appropriation? Question will be, who can spell D appropriation five times? All right, seeing none. Let's go to comments from the public. If you have any, come forward to this podium in the Natty Hill or raise your hand on teams. Seeing none. Let's go to a roll call vote.
Counselor Iverson?
Yes.
Counselor McKim?
Yes.
Counselor Wiltz?
Yes.
Counselor Crossley?
Yes.
Counselor Deckard?
Yes.
Motion passes unanimously.
Now, a question I have, do we need item C based on all this? This was the, C was a, that was added, I believe.
That's that category transfer? That or are we going to do the rainy day?
We're doing rain, so we, we don't need it, right?
No, we do need it.
We do need it.
Do you have to obligate it?
Yeah, in order to do the rainy day process, we would have to do a category transfer to move the appropriation to the financial director.
Right, so then that money will go in.
Wrap it up.
Okay. Counsel, I move to approve the auditor's request for a category transfer and fund eighty-nine fifty dash zero, 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 American Rescue Plan Act Fund in the amount of forty-six thousand, four hundred thirty-seven dollars, fifteen cents from the services category to the personnel category.
Second.
All right. We've discussed, right?
Can you just amend that to add the account line since it has not been added to this fund?
Line one, zero, zero, three.
Just that one for the financial director?
Yes.
Ask unanimous consent to also add line one, zero, 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 three, county financial director.
Any objections? So ordered. All right, so we've done that. These minutes will be as clear as anything ever written. All right, so we've got the underlying motion. This is finishing this off. We're almost there. Any other discussion or questions? Seeing none. Let's go to, yes, Counsel Iverson. No, he's not. Let's go to the public. If you have one, raise your hand on teams or come forward to this podium. Seeing none. Let's go to a roll call vote.
Counselor McKim?
Yes.
Counselor Wiltz?
Yes.
Counselor Crossley?
Yes.
Counselor Deckard?
Yes.
Counselor Iverson?
Yes.
Motion passes unanimously.
All right, so now we're going to leave the land of ARPA in good hands?
No, I need one more thing. Sorry. We need to create an account line within rainy day for them to be able to make
Payments to those.
Payments. So I have to defer to Carly with regards to that account line. I don't have a page, but I will use your electronic signatures for that one.
If no one opposes, I suggest we use contractual services account line three, eight, three, two, zero.
What's the fund number?
Not, it's eleven eighty-six dash zero, 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 zero.
Counsel, I move, we create the line in fund one, one, eight, six, dash, zero, 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 rainy day. Line three, eight, three, two, zero, contractual services.
Second.
All right, we've got this motion second. This is the last ARPA item. Any questions or discussion? All right, seeing none. Let's go to the public. If you have a comment, come to the podium, raise your hand on teams. Seeing none. We'll do a roll call vote. Can we do a voice vote?
It's a creation. You can do a voice vote.
All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Oppose the same sign. Motion carries unanimously.
Thank you.
Thank you. Let's move on to item seventeen. This is auditor's office in end of year housekeeping.
Counsel, I move to approve the auditor's request in fund forty-eight seventeen dash zero, 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 twenty twenty Geo Bond Capital Projects, the creation of new, of new, the creation of the new account lines as set out on the agenda and to simultaneously approve additional appropriations in the amount of ninety-nine thousand, seven hundred ninety dollars in the services category and two million, eight hundred eighty-two thousand, one hundred thirty-four dollars and forty cents in the capital category for an appropriation of two million, nine hundred eighty-one thousand, nine hundred twenty-four dollars and forty cents.
Second.
Carly, do you want to speak to this?
Yes, this is the twenty twenty Geo Bond Capital Projects Fund. It does not require appropriation. However, the council has decided to appropriate it historically. In twenty, sorry, in twenty twenty-three, this was attempted to be entered into gateway. Unfortunately, because the state funds and our funds do not align, the wrong fund was used, so on and so forth. We are going to get that appropriated in twenty twenty-four just for clean records.
Questions, comments from counselors?
Just to clarify, this is correcting errors, not that we suddenly have a hundred thousand dollars to spend on furniture.
Absolutely correct.
That money has already been spent on furniture.
If I recall correctly, the rest of our agenda is.
Housekeeping.
Housekeeping. All right. So with that, anyone else? Let's go to the public. If you have a comment on this housekeeping item, you can raise your hand on teams or come to the podium. Seeing none. We'll go to a roll call vote.
Counselor Wiltz?
Yes.
Counselor Crossley?
Yes.
Counselor Deckard?
Yes.
Counselor Iverson?
Yes.
Counselor McKim?
Yes.
Motion passes unanimously.
Let's go to item B.
Counsel, I move to approve the auditor's request for an additional appropriation and fund forty-five eighteen dash zero, 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 twenty eighteen redevelopment bond in the amount of two hundred fifty-five dollars and ninety-nine cents in the services category.
Second.
All right. And any questions from counsel on this? No? All right, any public comment? If you have them, come forward to the podium or raise your hand on teams. All right, seeing none. Let's do a roll call.
Counselor Crossley?
Yes.
Counselor Deckard?
Yes.
Counselor Iverson?
Yes.
Counselor McKim?
Yes.
Counselor Wiltz?
Yes.
Motion passes unanimously.
Item C.
Counsel, I move to approve the auditor's request for an additional appropriation and fund forty-five twenty dash zero, 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 twenty twenty redevelopment bond in the amount of one million, three hundred eighty-one thousand, six hundred forty-five dollars and seventy-three cents in the services category.
Second.
All right, any questions, comments from counsel? Seeing none. If you have a comment in the public, raise your hand on teams or come forward to the podium. Seeing none. We'll go to a roll call vote.
Counselor Deckard?
Yes.
Counselor Iverson?
Yes.
Counselor McKim?
Yes.
Counselor Wiltz?
Yes.
Counselor Crossley?
Yes.
Motion passes unanimously.
Move to D.
Counsel, I move to approve the auditor's request to reestablish the FLSA status of exempt to job description, general ledger, grants manager and internal auditor and to simultaneously amend the twenty twenty-five salary ordinance to reflect the change back to exempt status with an effective date of January twenty twenty-five.
Second.
Questions, comments from counsel? Seeing none. We'll go to the public. If you have a comment, raise your hand on teams or come forward to the podium. Seeing none. Go to a roll call vote.
Counselor Iverson?
Yes.
Counselor McKim?
Yes.
Counselor Wiltz?
Yes.
Counselor Crossley?
Yes.
Counselor Deckard?
Yes.
Motion passes unanimously.
Let's go to E, which is the largest motion Counsel Crossley will ever do.
You'll get sick of me talking like my kids do. All right, counsel, I move to approve the auditor's request for an additional appropriation and the following funds to ensure account lines under appropriated or, under appropriated or appropriated outside of council approval will have a positive balance for the twenty twenty-four budget. will have a positive balance for the 2024 budget year end. Item E, fund 4900-0000 employee morale, $2,532.42 in the services category. Fund 4926-0000 courthouse rental, $540 in the capital category. Fund 1000-0005 general fund sheriff, $9.99 in the supplies category. Fund 1114-0166 lit special purpose YSB, $4,000 in the services category. Fund 1156-0000 firearms training share, $4,333.80 in the services category, $22,000 in the capital category for a total appropriation of $26,333.80. Fund 1176-0000 motor vehicle highway, $4,700, I'm sorry, $4,172.60 in the services category. Fund 1224-0000 reassessment fund assessor, $17,000 in the services category. Fund 4009-0000 sheriff cell administration share, $6,000 in the supplies category. Fund 4100-0000 donations youth shelter YSB, $1,905.67 in the supplies category. Fund 4102-0000 donations APS unit 10 prosecutor, $590.37 in the services category. Fund 4106-0000 donations safe place YSB, $6,467.71 in the services category. Fund 4110-0000 donations prevention general YSB, $1,493.83 in the supplies category, $396.65 in the services category for a total appropriation of $1,890.48. And last but not least, a fund 4111-0000 donations BTCC YSB, $2,019.84 in the supplies category, $16,463.31 in the services category for a total appropriation of $18,483.15.
Second. Well done.
For folks watching at home, I just have a note here that they've left me to read. This is, these are, is a housekeeping motion that's now before us per the auditor's request. The auditor's doing a very good job about monitoring the books, making sure that we're keeping compliant with things. And this is counsel's end on that. Any member, though, that wishes to separate a particular fund from this motion may make a motion now. As said, you'll have to do that and no one's going to help you do it, so you're on, you're on your own.
Let's separate them all.
You'd be a brave counsel. Is everyone okay with the motion as identified? Carly, do you have anything you want to add here?
Thank you for reading all of that. I do apologize.
That's okay.
I use my husband's TV voice.
All right, councilors, do you have any comments or questions other than what's been said? Okay, so we'll go now to public comment. If you have any, come to that podium here in the Natty Hill or raise your hand on teams. Seeing none, we'll go to a roll call vote.
Counselor Wiltz.
Yes.
Oh my gosh.
Counselor Crossley.
Yes.
Counselor Deckard.
Yes.
Counselor Iverson.
Yes.
Counselor McKim.
Yes.
Motion passes unanimously, and you've got several pages to sign, so just so you know.
And it looks like we've got a hand raised. Am I missed a public comment there? Mr. Mr. Bernworth, I think it is, do you want to unmute and offer your comment?
Okay, here you go. I was just wanting to ask, could you repeat that whole thing? I'm just kidding, I'm kidding.
Oh, that's funny.
We've got, we've got comedians in the public too, it's not just. This is a good county, I tell you, friends.
We need to go laugh, thank you.
All right, thank you. Is there any, so we, have we done the roll call on that then?
Yes.
All right, my brain has left the building. So we're on item 17 now, Kim, correct?
It should be, there should be
There's item R.
17 R?
Yeah, there should be an R.
Okay.
That is, and I will read. Here we go. Counsel, I move to approve the auditor's request for the creation of account line 32776 principal other debt and fund 1000-0061 county general counsel to assist in making the necessary Geo Bond debt service payment.
Second.
A motion and a second. Any, just, Ms. Woodruff, if you want to add anything?
You want anything added or is there unanimous understanding?
This is weird enough that I, I feel, even though it's late, I feel like we need to
Yeah, yeah, please.
If you don't know, I can, I can answer because it was Bree and I that met to do this. Okay, so Bree and I met this afternoon and when we were looking over the 1782 is when we discovered that she, the, the payment was going to be short. And so at this point, you know, she can't ask for an additional appropriation. So we looked to see where could this payment be made out of, since it's a debt service, it, you know, has to come out of general fund. So our council fund, I had scheduled contractual with regards to FSG and I'm having a brain fart, I'm so sorry. Whiz. FSG has yet to send us a, a bill for 2024. So I'm assuming what's going to happen is it's going to come in 2025. So we have the funds to be able to cover in our budget for that. So we need to add that account line so that we can separate it out and they can, you know, and we know why we're doing it, so. And we'll do an in-house, in-house transfer from contractual into that, into that line.
Counsel McKim.
And I'm sorry, what was that amount again? This is like 5,000 something?
Yes.
$5,342.40.
Thanks, and we think it's round, it's just rounding is the reason why we were short?
Yes.
Okay.
All right, councilors, any other comments on this one? Seeing none. How about the public? If you have a comment, come forward to the podium or raise your hand on teams. Let's go to the final roll call of the night.
It's a creation of an account line, I can do a voice vote.
Well, let's do that then. Councilors, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? That is unanimous adoption of councilors present. That takes us, friends, to item 18, counsel comments. Councilors, any comments for the good of the order? Counsel Iverson.
Kick us off. To all of the staff in rural county, to all of our department heads, to all the folks that are providing services with us, all those who work with us, happy holidays. This is the final council meeting and just wish you a end of year that is merry, bright, and full of mirth. So thank you for working with us and we look forward to working with you next year.
Full of mirth. I enjoy being mirthy. This, this, this meeting has gotten mirthful also.
We gave you, Counsel McKim, we gave you a real city council type meeting at 9:20 PM.
I really appreciate. My last meeting was such a doozy. That was, that was great.
Any other counsel comments? Counsel McKim.
Thanks, and I'm, I did want to talk just briefly about the, first of all, the 1782s. And so my understanding is that there, you've essentially addressed the debt issue, that the highway issue has been addressed as well. The highway was not really a million dollar short, but that was just how, which fund the miscellaneous revenue was recognized. And there was also a, I think a transfer in rainy day that wasn't reflected. I mean, I know it doesn't really matter that much, but is that something we were going to correct?
We have put in a call to DLGF, to our rep, and so we're going to, you know, see if that's something we can do, so.
It just makes it look like we're, we're running our rainy day down almost to nothing when none of that is, is correct, so that was, that was my only.
Yeah, we've reached out to them, we're just waiting for a call to come back, so.
And so then on the, the 1782s, we'll notice that the operating balance at the end of December of 2020, 2025 is over 25 million. And that, that is in a fund in which our target balance is 15 million, right? And I say that just because the one, one regret I have in the way things played out is that I don't get to vote in favor of a, a raise for the sheriff's deputies to be competitive with other law enforcement agencies around. And I understand why we didn't do it tonight and it would have been absolutely insane if we did. But I think there was some, I, I, I kind of want to compliment the council office on the analysis that the council office did on the sheriff's proposals. I think there are a couple of things that are, that are important that came out of it. One of them is the idea of tying the senior staff to the appointed senior staff to the sheriff, as a percentage of the sheriff's salary, rather than relating to merit deputy salary. Just like every other elected official, their chief deputies are paid as a percentage of the elected official's salary. So that, I, I really hope that the next council moves forward and, and adopts that, that practice. Then, then the other, I think the, the other thing is you came up with a series of scenarios and scenario three, essentially it wasn't as much as, as they asked for, but it was enough to be ahead of the city, to still be ahead of the city. And that's what I'm hoping that, you know, so that, that maybe around 9,500, $10,000 would give that, I would, I think, be enough to keep competitive and make sure that, that, that we're able to continue to recruit and retain. And so I, that would, I seem to remember that was maybe, that would maybe cost about $500,000. And I guess what my suggestion is, is that, that $500,000 is would still be able to fit within rainy, or not rainy day, within the general fund for one year. And then you can, you can kind of see, for example, at the end of this year, what our, what our reversions are, what the fund situation looks like. Other opportun, other alternatives would be of some small amount of, of the jail tax. Now, I know we can't directly put the deputy salaries in the jail tax, but I mean, there are plenty of corrections related expenses that could be moved over and the, and then the economic development tax, which can be spent on any lawful county expense. But I guess I would recommend not doing that until the next year because I think there'll be a lot of things we'll, we'll learn about, you know, whether there's going to be any kind of major property tax change, property, property tax reduction or so on. But I guess what I'm saying is I do hope that the next council moves forward and works with the sheriff's department to, to provide the, you know, to provide an appropriate raise for the merit deputies to make sure we, we, we stay competitive. So that's, that's my one substantive comment. I guess my other comment is just, I thank you all for your, your friendship and mentorship and collegiality over the years. I thank everybody in the, the council office and county legal. It's, and the auditor's office. It's just, it's been a pleasure dealing, working with all of you for so many years. And thank you very much for, for this plan, so.
Thank you much, Counselor McKim. One thing I did tease Jeff about earlier, just a moment ago, when I said that this is our last meeting of the year, I said they'll call me tomorrow and there'll be a need to come back. So don't, don't you worry about that. Hopefully I'm wrong on that. But if, if this is indeed your last meeting, thank you so much. Today has been a lot for us and there's a lot going on. Come January, there will be different people here in some part of January or not. But we never forget what we have and the experiences we get and just thanks so much. It's, it's, it's awesome. Today is a bittersweet day in so many ways. Any other counselor have anything they need to add other than they want to go home? Thanks to our, all of our folks that got us through this year. Hopefully this will be the last meeting of the year, but they'll, they'll be the ones telling me that here in about six hours or so. But otherwise, everyone out there be safe, be good to each other during this holiday season. Thanks to all of our county folks for doing what they do to keep us safe in that, including the folks at our sheriff's department and in our, our entire system, roads, all that that keep people moving in this season. All right, friends, with that, we will adjourn.